Number items here today, I do want to say in the past when we had a long agenda. I think it's been prudent that we do stop for lunch. I know that looking at that this is going to take us into the afternoon. And so somewhere around noon, I would suggest that we do take a 30 minute break. So those that wish to grab a bite or whatever and replenish themselves. And then we come back fresh and finish the rest of the agenda. And I know in the past, we've tried to get that agenda in and take a short break. But some most times it doesn't always work that way. So we'll play it by ear, but that is the intent as we move along for today. Because there are a lot of items on the agenda. So I'm going to call that community, the whole meeting to order. I'm going to say that's 10:36. Madam clerk, are there any declaration of pecuniary interests with regards to the agenda? That's been published. Okay, seeing none. And so moving on then from business arising, we do have a notice of motion by.
Mr. Warden.
Sorry.
I wonder with council's permission, we do have a delegation that was scheduled for 10. If with council's permission, we could move that ahead of the business arising.
Absolutely. Thank you for that. Is there any concern by doing that from county councils? And we move right into that delegation because it was scheduled for 10 o'clock. All right, hearing none, good suggestion, Madam clerk. Thank you for that. So we'll move into that delegation then from a number of speakers with regards to the community safety and wellbeing plan. And Sarah Colley is, I think, and there's a number of people there are going to meet off on that. So not to hold off, I'll move right into that. Sarah and company.
Sorry, Sarah, we're having trouble hearing you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
So much like you're on, you're not on speaker.
Can you hear me now?
Better.
Okay.
You're sort of distant, though.
I think she was logging off and going to re-join the meeting, Mr. Warden.
Okay. So this community safety plan has been in, community safety and wellbeing plan has been in the works for over a year. And I'm sure we all have staff or other people being part of that. There was, there is a report further in our agenda. It's regards to that plan.
Hello, Sarah. Can you hear me now?
Better, much better. Welcome.
Okay, good. Thank you, yes, sorry, had to log off and try again. I don't know what was going on there. So as I was just saying, I am going to be the only one presenting today, but I do have Barb Fady with me. She's a volunteer for the community wellbeing planning process. And I do appreciate your time today. We will keep it short. You do have a presentation that we sent out. And I believe Tara was going to be sharing that with all of you and flipping the slides for me. Thank you, Tara. So we'll dive right in to slide three, actually. And what, what we want to highlight for you is the importance of why we're doing safety and wellbeing planning. So this is highlighted under the Police Services Act. It was brought into being at the beginning of this year. And the goal is to really look at ensuring that in the community, everyone has a sense of belonging, opportunities to participate, and that individuals and families are able to meet their needs education, healthcare, food, housing, income, and social and cultural expression. Because we know these things will ultimately lead to a reduction in crime across the region. And so as I said, this is process, this is legislated under the Police Services Act. And the two counties and 16 participating municipalities entered into an agreement to complete one regional plan. And at this point in time, I'd like to highlight, we believe this is the largest and most unique collaboration in Ontario. Next slide, please. So just to give a quick highlight of the framework from Ontario. So the goal is to look at the four rings or areas of intervention when it comes to crime prevention. And so as you can see from the image on the right, what we really want to do is focus more on those larger outer rings, the social development and the prevention. And you can see the definitions here. We're really looking at those upstream interventions where we're tackling things from a social determinants health perspective, looking at complex issues like poverty, mental health concerns from all angles. When we look further in, if you flip to the next slide, please, you'll see we want to, we, we know that risk intervention and incident response is extremely important. But the, the goal of upstream intervention is to see that we have to intervene in less numbers. Your numbers have fewer incidents down the road if we, if we hit those social development and prevention. Where we're not having to deal with critical and non-critical incidents, where we're looking at police, fire emergency, fire emergency medical services, and child welfare organizations potentially having to be involved. Next slide, please. So you can see here, so this collaboration has 72 partners. So again, two counties, 16 lower tier municipalities. They have two First Nations partners organizations at the table, all eight police services, 14 police service boards, six organizations from children and youth and youth justice, four from education, that's all three school boards and Georgian College. We have nine community and social service organizations, five representing health and mental health, and six community committees and collaboratives that already exist that are already doing good work in all of these areas. Next slide, please. So just to highlight for you, one key thing I wanted to share, of course, this project to date has taken resources financially and from a time perspective, from all participating organizations, counties and lower tier municipalities. But it also included the participation of almost 2,000 residents from across Bruce and Gray, who took part in our public consultation process, which actually, we were really pleased took place right before COVID hit in March. And I did want to highlight for you, one of the key groups that started this planning process was the Halton Region. And when they did their first round of planning, they had just over 500 residents participate. And I think it's really interesting to note that, that we had three and a half times, more than three and a half times participation. And we are three and a half times smaller from a population perspective than Halton is. So our communities were really engaged. Next slide, please. Would also like to highlight, we've had lots of support from the Canadian Municipal Network on Crime Prevention. They've really taken the lead in ensuring that all communities across Canada are supported with this planning process. And we're involved in the Ontario Municipal Social Services Association. They have a working group of coordinators for the safety and wellbeing planning. Next slide, please. So our timeline, as I said, so many of you may recall last spring of 2019, we, we had a large meeting through Healthy Communities Partnership to bring this information to the communities. But then this work actually began in September. And you can see all the phases of work through now to where we are, which is planned presentation and adoption by the lower tier municipalities. I will also speak later on about the indicator report that we've been working on to ensure that our actions are evidence based and that we're able to evaluate them moving forward. Next slide. For our model, you have this in your package, but it does include a variety of people who have a variety of roles, responsibilities. And the key one I want to highlight at this point is the action tables. But this is the phase we're moving into now is implementation, looking to implement actions specific to each of our priority areas of risk, which I will talk about briefly now. You have perfect, if you could flip to the next slide, Tara, thank you. So for many around the table, no surprise, our priority risk area number one, both from a data perspective, so using our local data and from a public perception perspective, came up as addiction and substance use. And so the areas that we're going to look at as we move forward are really centered around regular heavy drinking, continue, continuing to be a known issue because self-reported use continues to be tracking higher in Bruce and Gray than in Ontario. We know that over half of our emergency department visits are linked to alcohol. And there has been a two and a half to three times increase for opioid related visits. We know that school student alcohol and cannabis use is increasing. And although this concern is not necessarily reflected in some of the local police data, since the legalization of cannabis in October 28, we know that we do need to keep an eye on this and continue to track it. And we do see that addiction and substance use is the cause of increasing hospitalization and death in the region. When we look at priority risk area two, again, no surprise to anyone, mental health. So we continue to see that self-rated mental health indicators show approximately 20% of residents across Bruce and Gray are experiencing a lot of stress. And at least 15% are seeking help for mental health issues. We know that more than 30% of students in grade seven to 12 experience moderate to severe psychological distress. And a third of those still want to talk to someone, but don't know where to turn. We also know that both EMS and police services in the region have seen increases in calls related to mental health concerns. And that 211 calls for mental health reasons have also increased. Finally, we know that self harm emergency department visit rates have tripled among young females locally comparable to the province. And that Bruce and Gray males 25 to 44 years of age continue to have higher hospitalizations and death by suicide than Ontario. Priority risk area three was crime prevention. And although it's difficult to get a clear picture of our police crime statistics across the region because of the differences of reporting between OPP detachments and our four local municipal police services, we do have individual statistics for each of those areas. And a review of this information will be extremely important as we move forward with planning for action. What we do know, though, across the region is that criminal court cases show trends are increasing over time for most offenses. And you can see there's a 17 to 27% increase across offenses from 2017 to the 2019, 2020 year. Also, a key statistic to keep in mind that we'll, we'll be looking at for action is that overall, although assault injuries are comparable to Ontario rates, the Bruce and Gray rate of emergency department visits due to assaults is higher than the Ontario rate. So we see a higher level of impact in the area. The next two, we did talk when we started planning about having kind of the top three areas regionally that we'd want to tackle. But when we looked at the data and the resident perceptions, we knew we couldn't leave out the next two because they are so intrinsically entwined in the impacts related to mental health addictions and the, and crime itself. So priority risk area four is housing and homelessness. And we see in our area that compared to Ontario and Canada, we have more owned dwellings and fewer rental dwellings. Although, and some also have more subsidized housing, so specifically Own Sound, Meaford, King Carden, and Southgate. We know that over 15% of homeowners and all, almost 50% of renters in Bruce and Gray spend more than 30% of their monthly income on shelter costs. And this is a situation that leaves them only once to paychecks away from potentially not being able to pay their housing bills. So wait, that, that short period of time away from homelessness. We also know that average housing prices are increasing, although they remain lower than Ontario, and that we have very low rental vacancy rates in our region, which are similar to Ontario, but present complications for people if they're under housed or housed in this living situation that isn't sustainable, where there's repairs that need to be made or that they're smaller than they actually need for their family size. Seasonal housing numbers are high, of course, in North Bruce Peninsula, town of the Blue Mountains and South Bruce Peninsula. And we know that housing waitlists are increasing as our calls to 211 for housing related issues. Finally, then priority risk area five is poverty and income. And so here we see that median, median household incomes in our region are lower than Ontario and are the lowest in Own Sound, Hanover, and South Bruce Peninsula. And approximately 20% of children in the region still live in poverty, based on the low income measure after tax. And this is the highest in here on Kenlos at 30%, then Chatsworth, Own Sound, Southgate, and Aaron are all of the 5%. We also know that trends from various organizations are showing increasing needs for support, such as Ontario Works, Ontario Disability Support Program, the United Way Backpack Program, Utility Assistance, and 21 Call, 11 Calls for Food and Meals, and Utility Assistance Services. People not able to pay for their food or pay for their utilities. And we also know that over 25% of our residents report spending more than 30% of their income on housing. 5% in the past year had not paid rent or mortgage on time. 18% reported not paying their bills on time. And 9% ate less because they did not have enough money to buy food. So as we look at how do we tackle those, again, we know that lots of good work is happening, whether it's in a sector or an organization or a collaborative committee, a cross-sector committee. And so what the, the goal of our project and the safety and wellbeing planning moving forward is really to look at collective planning across sectors. And between those collaborative committees, in order to ensure our responses and actions are systems based and are tied to outcomes that can be evaluated. So the plan is designed to leverage the good work already being done across Bruce and Gray by enhancing the collaboration and coordination of the work being done. That is a key outcome indicator for community safety and wellbeing planning is to help bring that work together and to organize it and coordinate it. Next slide. And so when I talked about the indicator report early on, that is really with the goal of facilitating outcome evaluation. So although not originally on the work plan for this project, we determined that an indicator for report was really necessary because it will bring together all of the local data. And there is a lot, there is a significant amount of local data that we can use to drive our outcome evaluation. But it's in many places. And so we really wanted to create a safety and wellbeing indicator report that would allow us to look at all of the categories, priority areas of risk, and determine what were some indicators and actions that we could take so that we can start trend and track whether or not we're making improvements in those areas. And so as I said, ultimately, this report will facilitate outcome evaluation using our local data and will be a resource for the advisory committee and the identified action tables. Next slide. So sustainability, all the two counties and the lower tiers are of course planning budgets right now. And the current discussion around budget is to have everyone participate in the planning process in the same way they did financially for the first year, for this year. To hire a coordinator to really assist in determining the work and driving those action plans forward and looking at the evaluation. Because we know without resourcing, the momentum of the project is at risk. But by pooling resources, there will be a reduction in the duplication of work and the overall implementation cost for individual local municipalities. So we'll have a really streamlined approach, which again, need to highlight across the provinces is extremely helpful and unique. And so when we look at next steps for Bruce and Gray, moving from phase one, which was plan creation, which we've come to, and into phase two implementation, we get put to the next slide, Tara. Thank you. So of course, we're presenting to county councils for endorsement now. And then I am presenting to all of the 16 participating lower tier municipal councils to support their approval by resolution of the plan. We will then be posting the plan and that indicator report, once it's finalized on our website, we'll have that annual budget confirmation for sustainability, continue with the coordinator work to drive this forward. We'll look at the action tables and those local committees and organizations already doing the great work to help organize them around those priority areas of risk. Look at what are the individual actions and evaluation outcomes. And then we will look at the implementation, monitoring, evaluation, and revision of the plan with annual progress reports to the advisory committee, councils, and the ministry as well under the legislature. So any questions?
Okay, Sarah. Thank you for that report and a lot of hard work's gone into that. And I just want to say that certainly with COVID-19, I'm sure that is, hasn't helped on the mental health part of what you're finding.
We actually have found, Warden McLean, that all of those people who were vulnerable before COVID are even more vulnerable now. So everyone in each of those priorities of risk, whether it's with the housing and homelessness, whether it's related to poverty and income or mental health and addiction, it's just worsening the situation for them. And we need to collaborate for more.
Definitely, was definitely. Okay, thank you for that. Questions to our presenter? Are there questions from county council? I see Councilor Compass, go ahead. Maybe there's others.
Thanks very much. And thank you, Sarah, for a very, very comprehensive report. I guess my question is, and congratulations for getting this much done in a, in a time when COVID has impacted all of us. My question was whether your public engagement has been through, mostly through the surveys, through Survey Monkey or whatever vehicle you use? Or have you actually been able to talk with individual groups and, and individuals? My second question, part to that was in terms of, of the, the impact of COVID and whether or not there's been some thought given to, might some of the answers to the survey questions be a little different now? Or in intensity, if nothing else, after we have gone through this experience of COVID and, and coping with emergencies and that kind of thing?
Thank you so much for your question. Engagement piece first, definitely the engagement we were able to do before COVID started and that all the, of course, community activities and groupings of people shut down was online. So our, it was a community engagement survey that we were able to conclude.
I'm sorry.
Oh, are you not able to hear me?
No, I couldn't hear you.
Oh, others are saying yes. Can you hear me now?
Garwood, but just be clearly, please.
Sure, no problem. So the engagement for this project for phase one did involve online and hard copy surveys that we could get at the community. And as COVID hit and every, all of the face-to-face engagement kind of shut down and was put on hold, we really realized that we needed to be thoughtful as we determined specific actions for phase two moving forward. And so face-to-face engagement with people in, with lived experience, with other residents in the community, for each of those priority action areas will happen as we start to look at developing those individual action plans. So that is the goal. For the second piece around the impact of COVID, certainly, we know that our survey is pre-COVID, pretty much pre-COVID information. There was a bit of a, you know, a week or two overlap, but certainly people weren't feeling the impacts of COVID as early as March 15th, all those schools were closed at that time. And so we know that we have a significant part to play in the information, the data collection, and the tracking of the impacts of COVID on people as we move forward. So that survey, re-administering that community engagement survey will be key in looking at what those impacts of COVID have been and analyzing how, to what extent things have improved or worsened for various groups across the region. So we do see safety and wellbeing planning as a significant and integral part of the recovery process related to COVID.
Thank you.
Other questions from county council?
Mr. Warden, I did see Ms. Counselor Millen's hand.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm struck by the, and thank you, Sarah, for that report. It's very good from what I can see so far. I'm struck by the similarity to some of the conclusions you've come to that we're seeing on the Hanover Own Sound Task Force. The parallels there. My question is regarding the individual municipalities. You're looking for approval or endorsement for the local municipalities. Is, is this going to be sort of like the Russian polar bear? Somebody, Grey Highlands, are they going to have a veto on this? So it's all or nothing? Or what happens in the scenario where an individual municipality says no?
So I'm happy, I'm happy to address that. And then if Barb has further comments, I'll get her to speak to it as well. The goal here is that everyone who's, who is participating now would continue to participate. As you know, we do have one lower tier municipality who, who hasn't participated in phase one and they're doing this work independently. But if, the goal is that if those groups don't buy in for phase two, we would continue with the regional work with the participating municipalities. But under the legislation, those individual municipalities have to do the planning, evaluation on their own. So they have to continue with this work, whether it's with us or independently. And so of course, our goal is to ensure that we're being really resource efficient. And that's why having one coordinator doing one large project, supporting everyone to do the work, was seen to be the most efficient from a resource perspective. But they, they, they do still have to do the work themselves if they don't buy in.
Excellent, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So just be careful looking forward into the future, Counselor Millen. And thank you, Sarah. Yeah, Counselor Robinson, that's next to you. Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And through you, I just want to say congratulations for all of the work that has been done so far. I really appreciate the data that has been presented today. Much of that is extremely, shall I say, startling that individuals are living two pages away from, you know, a really crucial time in their, in their quality of life. I'm looking forward also to the continued data collection so that certainly this county and our county lower tiers are able to utilize the information in decision-making and priority setting. So it's extremely important. The other point I would like to make is that our West Grey Police Service will be attending the, your delegation when it, when your delegation is scheduled for West Grey Council. So we are looking forward to additional information. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. And just to speak to that, to the local data, certainly, we do have survey data specific to municipalities. And the municipalities have been provided with their individual responses from the survey. And we also, the goal is to tie that to that local data in the indicator report, to be able to help with locally driven responses. So although we know all five of these top five priority areas for risk are across the region, there may be something specific to a municipality that we would then want to support them to address. So we do want to make sure that that continues as well, that local, that local work and the regional work at the same time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry, my, my comment there about the Russians, I hope that didn't affect the warden's feed there.
I think the warden is frozen, so I'll just, Counselor Keveney.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I just wondered, Sarah, if I could ask if you would be presenting as well to our affordable housing task force? So much of the information you've gathered is related to housing. And I'm just wondering how else you may be sharing the information besides to each of the lower tiers?
Thank you for that. At this point in time, when you see the plan or if you go to our website, you can see all of the current partners, those 72 partners who are sitting at the table. And so the counties and the groups that are involved in that housing task force are at the table. So I would tell you that they will have all of this information and we will be working very closely with them as we move to action to determine what specific items do we need to tackle together, right? None, no one sector and no one organization can do this alone. So we will be working very closely with those groups to determine that work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Warden, you are on mute.
I'm on the county's internet here and I disappeared there for a while. I thought it'd be the best spot would be here. So anyway, sorry about that. I signed back in, so I don't know if others in the county building are having the same issue. But are there any other questions to Sarah? All right, so, well, thank you very much. We're going to be dealing with this item later on our agenda. And certainly, again, thank you for presenting this, Sarah, and all the hard work that you and all the others have been doing. And we look forward to getting approval from all the lower tier municipalities to moving into the phase two portion of this. So thank you again.
Thank you, Mr.
Okay, so it is 11:03. We'll move back, our next delegation is 11:15. So we'll move into the business arising again. And this is going back to the notice of motion by Counselor Desai. And at this time, Counselor Desai, I'm going to pass it over to you because you are moving this. But we will need a secondar if you're convincing enough to rest the county council.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm a little surprised there isn't a secondar for this.
Well, just for that, Madam.
We do need a secondar before Counselor Desai can speak to his motion.
I will second it, Madam clerk.
Counselor Millen.
Counselor Millen, okay, there you go. Go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. So the reason for presenting this notice of motion or this motion today, Mr. Warden, is quite simple. A number of times, the premier has referred to having a partnership with municipalities. A number of times, the premier has referred to municipalities being in the best position to know how their money is being spent. Yet, when shove, push comes to shove, it seems that the province has unilaterally almost decided that they would like to take away the option of ranked ballots. A number of municipalities have invested in having the option for ranked ballots. London was one which did it in 2018. Kingston and Cambridge had the question on the ballot in 2018. And they were moving towards having the ranked ballot in 2022. If memory serves, Meaford was starting to undertake that process as well on seeing, on seeing, on, on, going towards ranked ballots, if I'm not mistaken. But they've had to pull the plug on that. A recent report from the city of London shows that London would now have to spend another half a million dollars in order to go back to the, the regular first past the post ballot, which means that they'll be using a total of a million dollars for one election, being the 2018 election. I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think that's acceptable. I don't think it's fair to municipalities, the lack of consultation that was done on this. And I think in, in the spirit of a fair partnership, we should be expressing our displeasure of this item to the, to, to the province, and which is why I brought the motion forward. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you for that. And Counselor Millen, do you wish to speak to it as well? Go ahead.
I just had a question for perhaps yourself and Counselor Robinson. I'm just wondering what's, what AMO's position is on this.
So I can, I can sort of speak to, this came out in that bill, there has been some discussion at the MOU table, which I can't speak to directly because of the MOU relationship. But certainly, there has been some, I think, concern from the lower tier municipalities, as being mentioned here today. There has been other parts of this bill as well. The date, and there's some other parts because they're looking at changing the, the date of the, I think, you have to sign in by a certain date and they're proposing it to be later. There has been some concern on that. But, but again, generally, comments have, have came forward in the sense of some concern from, from some or a number of municipalities.
Well, I would, if I might, I would hope there would be some concern from AMO because at the very least, it is ironic that the premier himself was elected leader of his party by the ranked ballot. And now to see him stand back and say, oh, no, 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 the lower tiers, that's far too complicated for them to understand. Us here in the big boots, we understand it. So we'll keep it here, but you guys can't have it down there. That's, in my mind, unacceptable. And AMO needs to step up and tell the government that.
I will say that they, generally, there has been, there has been conversations going on. I will say that. And that's part of AMO's, part of AMO's relationship through that MOU. And I have to be very careful as on the executive part is I can't disclose other things that are in that, in that closed session. But I will say that AMO is having those conversations. Trust me in that. I don't know if Christine, you have anything to add, add to that, maybe from the Roma perspective, Christine?
So what I would say is with, with any upcoming meetings with regard to Roma or AMO, we will deliver that information to Gray County and have that discussion at the appropriate time. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to add, this sort of came out of left field. I'll leave it at that. I think, I think we're all aware of, all of a sudden, there it was, right? So, which is very unusual for the process that is normally, you know, gone through. I don't know, going back to you, Doc, or Counselor Deci, I'd like to say Doctor Deci. Counselor Deci, do you have anything to add to that from your notice of motion?
I think you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. I've been led to believe there used to be a Doctor Deci in Owen Sound. When I was at Georgian College in Barry, quite a few people asked me if I was related to him. I'm not, for the record, I guess. Just to add to this, I did send in an email as well to Grayden Smith, the president of AMO and, and the mayor of Bracebridge. And he, he had told me at the time that he would be speaking in his position as AMO president with, at the standing committee on Wednesday, a week ago yesterday. I've heard reports since, I was unable to see the video of the, of the committee meeting because we, we had our own council meeting that day. So I can't confirm this, but, but I have heard that AMO was not given an opportunity to speak at the committee. I don't know if either you or Counselor Robinson can comment on that or confirm that. But AMO has published a position on the, on the issue. And so I think that the more support there is behind AMO's position, the better it will be. And so with, having said that, Your Worship, I'd like to add a final clause to the motion that it be forwarded to our local MPP and the Office of the Premier, the Office of the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, as well as all AMO municipalities. And that's under, under, I think it's number 26 of, of our procedural bylaw, that this be, this be given action prior to ratification at the next council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thank you, Counselor Desai. And procedurally, Madam Clerk, do we need this an amendment or this can be added to his notice of motion as, as?
Will need it, will need it as an amendment. And I'm assuming that Counselor Desai would move that amendment. So we would be looking for a secondar. And just so I have it clear, all AMO municipalities, premier, local municipalities within Gray County and the Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing. And procedurally, 26.5B of the procedural bylaw approval prior to council.
Perfect. Sorry, it was, it was not local municipalities, it was local MPs.
Okay.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry, thank you.
Do I have a secondar for that amendment? Do I have a secondar?
I will second.
Counselor Millen, thank you. Discussing on the amendment. Okay, I hear none. Anybody opposed to that amendment?
Well, I see, I do see Counselor Burley's hand up for discussion.
Counselor Burley, go ahead.
I think this is a very important motion I would like a recorded vote on.
On the amendment or on the, on the full?
On the full motion.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind. This is the, this is just the amendment part to add to this motion, for sure. Okay, so I hear no, no one else. Is anybody opposed to the amended motion? Okay, that is carried. Now, we have the main motion that's been amended. I guess going back to you, Counselor Desai, have you had any discussion or conversation about? Because I understand in that bill as well, there is a change, I think. Originally, it was July 17th was the cutoff and they've moved it into September. Have you followed up on that part of the bill? Because I know that, that is something that's raised as well.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. On that part of the bill, MPTO has released a position on that. I haven't followed that part as closely, unfortunately, but AMO has also referred to it in their position on that. And AMO's position on it is that if they do absolutely believe that a date change is necessary, that it go to the second last week of August in order, so that staff may have enough time to prepare the ballots and manage the elections administration. So AMO's, AMO's position speaks to that as well. And so in this case, with effectively, we're expressing displeasure with Schedule Two of Bill 218, which includes all of the, all of those changes to the Municipal Elections Act.
No, that's, that's quite, that's quite, quite, that's good to hear that because I know that was positions of other people had been speaking with regards to that change of date as well. And just going back to Counselor Millen, we do have a full AMO board meeting coming up at the end of November. Certainly, if this passes, another information that comes forward is indicated from Counselor Robinson. We can certainly communicate that strongly as at the full board on the, toward the end of the month. Okay. Any further discussion with regards to this notice of motion? Okay, seeing none?
Yeah, sorry. I do see Counselor Mackey.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Mackey, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I'm not sure who can answer this. But in regards to ranked ballots, it's still up to the individual municipality to decide which way they want to go, correct?
Yes.
I'm not sure who to, maybe the clerk can answer that for me, please.
Sorry.
No, go ahead, Counselor Deci. The clerk doesn't, we, we don't run elections every four years. We participate with our local clerks. So I, I do believe that it is up to the municipalities. But certainly, I'm sure Counselor Deci can speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Warden. So as of right now, without the passage of Bill 218, it is up to individual municipalities to decide on whether they run a ranked ballot election or a first past the post election. If Bill 218 were to pass without any changes made to it, we would no longer have a choice. All municipalities would have to use the first past the post system.
Okay, thank you. And just, you made, Counselor, you made a comment about the municipality of Meaford. I would like to give municipality Meaford an opportunity to sort of, to add clarity to that, just so it's clear. Counselor Columbus or W.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, indeed. We had, as the council had, had decided on the Monday council meeting to allow a referendum question on the next ballot coming up in 2022 with regard to ranked ballots. And then the very next morning came the news that ranked ballots would not be permitted. So we have now issued a further discussion on this and have offered our objections as well to exactly what is proposed here, Section Two of Bill 218, with regard to the election timing as well, the timing of the various component parts, but mostly with regard to the ranked ballot. So that information will be coming forward to all of our lower tier colleagues, as well as the ministers involved and county council as well.
Okay, thank you. And we will be talking about it later on the meeting with regards to Roma. And I don't know if this is something as a delegation request is, as well, just let's just sort of park it there for now. And that's something that we can talk about later in the meeting. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
If I may make a last closing statement, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Since we, we spoke about Meaford last, I did see the, the video from that council meeting. And one of the, one of the issues that has been raised is the cost of switching to ranked ballots. And something that the clerk, Matt Smith, from Meaford said was quite resonating. And it's a quote, and the quote goes, "It's easy for me to say, as a clerk, I don't believe you should ever make a decision about an election based on money. An election is the fundamental principle of our democracy. And so you should do what's best for our population and not what is cheapest for our population." And I think that's a great note to end, end my speaking on this, on this motion. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for those words. Thank you, Counselor Columbus. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any other comments?
No, sir.
All right, I think Counselor Burley had asked for a recorded vote, so I'll leave it up to you to do the honors of that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Mackey?
In favor?
Counselor Gamble?
In favor.
Counselor Burley?
Oppose.
Counselor Carlton?
In favor.
Warden McQueen?
In favor?
Counselor Desai?
In favor?
Counselor Patterson?
In favor.
Counselor Hicks?
Yay.
Counselor Columbus?
In favor.
Counselor Kivany?
In favor.
Counselor Boddy?
In favor.
Counselor O'Leary?
In favor.
Counselor Woodbury?
In favor.
Counselor Millen?
Yay.
Counselor Soever?
In favor.
Counselor Potter?
In favor.
Counselor Robinson?
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson?
In favor.
Motion is carried, eighty-four to six.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Madam Clerk, and thanks for bringing that notice of motion forward, Counselor Desai and Counselor Millen. So I think we're just a little past 11:15, Madam Clerk. I think we could maybe roll into our second delegation and.
Mr. Warden, if I might, could we have, could, could we have a five minute recess before we go into the next delegation, please?
Absolutely. So welcome back. What time, Madam Clerk, you have? I have 11:20. Do we come back at 11:25 or is that?
Yes, please.
11:30?
11:25. We do have a full agenda, as you noted earlier.
Okay, so, yeah, five minutes.
Thank you.
Counsel, cameras and, and microphones off then, please.
All right, because we do have a long day, we'll, it is on my phone, 11:27, so we're, we're due to come back. All right, we'll call this meeting to order and moving on our agenda then for our second delegation. Dana Howes and Jerry Glover, cool chairs of the Greber Centennial Health Team Planning Committee. And there was a presentation in our package, so I'll move right on to our delegation. Welcome.
Good morning, Mr. Warden, council and staff. It's a pleasure being back here before Gray County Council. It's been some time with the recent developments of COVID has had everyone preoccupied. So we appreciate this opportunity to circle back and continue our engagement and update. We do have a presentation today and just looking for guidance, I believe that the county is controlling the slide deck. Is that accurate?
I thought Dana was, but we can certainly do that if that's the preference.
Oh, I can, I can.
Tara has started sharing the screen, if that's okay with you, Dana.
Good. I apologize, I'm at home under the weather, so I, in terms of coordination, I apologize for any disconnect I might be creating. So I'd like to introduce obviously myself, Jerry Glover, and Dana Howes from Hanover District Hospital. And joining us as part of this delegation today are your senior staff, Jennifer Cornell and Kevin McNabb. Next slide, please. So as many of you may appreciate that through legislation, the government in 2019 announced the creation and introduction of Ontario Health Teams. The auspice and premise of the Ontario Health Teams is to essentially bring everyone together. So we have the best coordinated care within a defined geographic region. And in this case, we're proposing Greber's. Next slide, please. What is an Ontario Health Team? So at the mature state, which is years away, we're looking at an Ontario Health Team for Greber's that is able and eligible to provide a full and coordinated continuum of care from A to Z for defined a population within our, within Greber's. We want to look at being able to offer patients 24/7 access to care coordination and system navigation services and to really work to ensure that patients experience those seamless transitions throughout their care journey. We hear catchphrases like warm transitions and pass offs, but it really is important that a patient understands what the right hand, left hand is doing, more so that the system understands what we're doing so we can be better and more responsive to the patient. We look to improve our performance across a range of outcomes linked to the quadruple aim. And this is a ministry mandate to achieve better healthcare outcomes, better patient and client and resident experiences, better value for money and better provider experiences. We want to measure and report against a standardized performance framework that is aligned and competes against the quadruple aims who are always holding ourselves accountable to the best standard. We want to eventually get to a single, clear accountability framework, be funded through one integrated funding envelope and reinvest any redundancy in cost savings back to the frontline staff and frontline care so that patients really truly experience the best care possible. And we want to take a digital first approach in alignment with provincial digital health policies and standards, including the provision of digital choices for patients to access care and health information and the tools that go along with that. And one of the advantageous things about COVID, if there is such an advantageous opportunity, is the opportunity for the system to be responsive and put into place virtual care technology. And that had been fragmented, but this really sped that up and that has been quite welcome. Next slide, please. So where have we been? In July 2020, the Ministry of Health informed Greber's that our readiness assessment had been reviewed and approved, and we had been invited to submit full application. And I believe that's where we sort of left off with Gray County, that we had submitted our readiness assessment and had been waiting for next steps. So we were invited to submit a full application September 18th. However, we recognized that that invitation was provided to us in the middle of COVID and everyone was quite busy. So we recognized that, A, competing priorities, we have not done enough regional engagement to feel confident to submit our application forward. We were really trying to be cognizant of any tick box that we click off, that we have really done the heavy lifting and the work. And we don't want to provide lip service. So we requested the ministry defer our acceptance or invitation, and we landed on December 18. So we requested the ministry defer our acceptance or invitation, and we landed on December eleventh. We're looking at all participating organizations will require board approval prior to we submit the full application. We want to ensure that all stakeholders have an appropriate time to review and provide some consultation into the document before we submit it. We also recognize we have to complete stakeholder engagement over the next five weeks, and that has been a tumultuous task. And I have to mention, I know even though we are providing this ramp up in terms of regional engagement, engagement is an iterative process that would be fluid and last the life until we get to maturity. And then thereafter, to ensure that we're holding ourselves accountable and being responsive to the local demographic. Next slide, please. Thank you. The Grey Bruce Ontario Health Team Planning Committee was created as a working group of the Bruce Gray, Bruce Gray Bruce Integrated Health Coalition in an effort to continue the health system collaboration that has already existed in Grey Bruce for the last twenty-five years. The purpose of this committee is to provide early oversight and direction on the creation of an Ontario Health Team in Grey Bruce. And membership will evolve to include patient, resident, client, caregiver and community leadership as the Ontario Health Team matures. And if I could just pause there and say, the committee is put together to provide early oversight, and we take this quite serious. And there is a distinction between, they say, collaborative working relationships and governance. And when we look at governance, it's very easy to get bogged down in terms of reference. But when we look at collaborative decision-making model, we all have a vested interest and we keep things fluid and iterative. So when we progress, everyone feels heard and we try to hit the best pulse every time out of the gate. Next slide, please. The current Grey Bruce Ontario Health Team Planning Committee is composed of the following list there. All member organizations of family health teams and community health centers in Grey Bruce. All executive leads of the three hospitals in Grey Bruce. The executive leads and operational leadership of the Canadian Mental Health Association for Grey Bruce. Keystone Child Family Services, the Executive Director of Home and Community Support Services for Grey Bruce. The Vice President of Home and Community Care for the Southwest Lynn, three lead physician representatives and the County Director of Grey for Long-Term Care. And I should say that that committee is not exhaustive or exclusive. As we grow and as we continue our consultation, people put their hands up that they want to participate, there's always opportunities at the table. And currently, the population that we're striving to accomplish, that we signaled to the ministry in our readiness assessment, that we're committed to as a regional to advance as part of our first year objectives, are two patient population types. Improving care transitions between seniors, essentially hospital, home, home to community. When you're being repatriated back home, is home oxygen there or the doctor's orders there? Is home nursing going to be there, personal support? And when you have to come back to the hospital, do we know that you're coming? Do we know why you're coming for? And do you have the transportation? So all those little pieces along the care continuum, and we also want to look at supporting patients living with mental health. Next slide, please. So governance, so I'll be sharing this presentation with my colleague Dana Howes, and I'll turn it over to her this time.
Thanks, Gerry. So Gerry and I had the opportunity to be educated a little bit more on governance this past July. And really, it has somewhat been the elephant in the room, as there's different interpretations of what that means for an Ontario Health Team. So we were very happy to hear that the Ministry of Health released a document regarding collaborative decision-making. And so really, there is clear direction for Ontario Health Teams regarding collaborative decision-making. So collaborative decision-making arrangements, rather than governance, is the term that the ministry is using. Because this reflects that the OHTs are still very early in their development and their implementation. And it also recognizes that individually, as a group, we're all still individually funded. And that we haven't determined our true scope of, of decision-making assigned to our OHT. And that will look different amongst OHTs across our province. Further, I think it's important to note that this term recognizes that the community context difference from region to region. Different regions will take different approaches to collaborative decision-making based on the roles, responsibilities and the feedback that they receive from their individual communities. The intention of using the term collaborative decision-making is to focus on defining one mechanism through collaborative decision-making can build to support and enable progress towards a more mature state, including delivery of an integrative model. The ministry has been very clear that they are not requiring that an OHT establish a new not-for-profit corporation, a legal partnership or any legal entity. Further, they're not asking us to adopt a type of agreement between, a particular type of agreement between members. So they're not asking us to form an alliance, a network. They're asking us at this stage, as leaders of organizations, to be the decision-makers and to work on engaging our community and transitioning to a model. The ministry has been very clear that when there are leading examples of, of shared decision-making models, and they will share those with us. I do think it's important to recognize that this, this is not, this is a coalition of the willing, the Ontario Health Team. And Gerry sort of alluded to that as well. We will, you know, move forward, and it does not mean that anybody who hasn't been at the table at this point isn't welcome in the future. So we recognize that for various organizations, that governance can be interpreted differently. And that collaborative decision-making arrangement isn't necessarily comfortable with all. But that doesn't mean that it, as we move forward, that organizations can't join in. Next slide, please. Next slide as well. So I think this is a really significant slide with respect to decision-making. That in the beginning, where we are in our development of becoming an OHT, so the introduction phase, it truly is administrators that are working towards creating engagement with our community as well as our patients and caregivers and various organizations and making the early decisions. But as we move further, further down in becoming an OHT, and as our OHT becomes more mature, it will eventually flip to be a community-led, collaborative decision-making model that has more community members than it does administrators. Next slide, please. And I think we've included the timeline, so just as a reminder of where we are, just to demonstrate, we are truly in the beginning stages of becoming an Ontario Health Team. And the next sort of doc, I guess, chart demonstrates that that shift from executive directors, health providers, physicians and patients in Ontario Health Team boards, from decision-makers and being informed to as we go to maturity, to a shared leadership. Look. Next slide. And, okay, and so pass it back to Gerry for engagement.
Thank you. So moving forward, when we look at the Grey Bruce geography, we're trying to understand what we're trying to improve or what we want to accomplish. So in order to do that, we have to obviously continue our engagement effort. So just to be transparent with this group, before COVID, we had seven engagement sessions that we had just scheduled through Grey Bruce. And we had a big collaborative of about a hundred and sixty attendees. And the day before the event, the ministry made us cancel the event. So we are now getting back to basics, for lack of better words. We have some standing committees on the OHT Planning Committee that are already active. They include provider engagements, so when we look at physicians, nurse practitioners, community engagement, we look at our indigenous communities. We have a governance committee that helped us get to where we're at in terms of collaborative decision-making model. And that is also a subcommittee that helps us put together slide presentations to engage community organizations and municipal leaders such as yourself. So moving forward, we know that we have to continue to do engagement with the upper and lower tier municipalities. I think most have almost, and Bruce and Gray have, have some understanding of who we are and what we're trying to do. As recently, I think as November fourth, there was a presentation or delegation at Gray Highlands. So we're also looking to engage all the small grassroots organizations. We recognize, we don't have all the answers. We recognize that these are almost sometimes impossible timelines. And that's why we're trying to really have a phased and approach, have a wait and see. Let's not rush this. Let's try to do this as best as we can. When we're just realistic with each other and look at capacity, and for the last fifty years, this system has been a patch of Band-Aids. So to think conceivably that we'll be leaning on governance or fixing all of the problems within Grey Bruce for all of our defined patient population within a year or two, or this term of this government is, you know, impossible. It's going to take us probably fifty-six years to get out of it and get it right, hopefully, for once, once and for all. So what we're trying to accomplish and improve in Grey Bruce is wait times for home care. You know, preaching to the choir, probably to the broader public, that you know, when you get out of surgery, there's not probably going to be somebody there that has a role leader for you, despite all the best intentions. Based on supply and demand, the system's just not set up and designed to care for so many people. So we have to do business differently. We want to reduce the number of patients with mental health and addiction showing up in emergency departments. That's not an appropriate place. Neither is a police station. We need to have people on the ground to be able to have the services that they need in a timely fashion. You know, four, five, six months for an urgent referral is unacceptable in many instances. We need to improve access to primary care. Physician recruitment, we need to look at provider recruitment. And we look at the mayor from Meaford on the line, Barbara, she's been very helpful in leading this charge up in her area as well. We wanted to look at increasing the percentage of hospital patients who receive a primary care provider within seven days of discharge from hospital. It's very important to have that follow-up. And what is probably most important of all things in creating a bit of a bottleneck is the reduction of the ALC rate from hospital. Many patients in hospital, for lack of whatever, are able to be repatriated back to the community, but there's no place to put them. So their home essentially becomes the hospital, and that backlogs the system for mental health and same-day appointment. So it really is a domino effect, and we have to do better. And having a broad view and a big consultative framework, we're going to try to narrow the focus. No, year over year, we'll accomplish more, but like we said, we can't accomplish everything overnight. And it's just going to be a series of iterative engagement opportunities to make sure that we get it right out of the gate and really bring the patient to the focus. That way, they are at the center of all the care. You know, for so many times, we can go to the hospital and you can see somebody down the hall and cross the hall, and they're always asking your name, and they don't know why you're there. How about we change the narrative? Would it be nice to know why you're there and what you're, who you need to see, as opposed to always feeling as you have to sell yourself and repeat your story? And we've heard that time and time again. Next step, please. Next slide, please. So questions for engagement that we want to put out to the broader public and to us elected leaders. And not looking for, you know, all the feedback to, and would certainly circle back and offline and would like to have more of an opportunity to have some dialogue. And also like to send you the guidance documents the ministry has sent us in terms of collaborative governance and the rise of framework that we're accountable to. And that would really help to provide maybe a broader understanding of where we have to get to and what the systems and challenges that we have to work through. So that way, transparently, everything that we know, everybody out there is aware of it. So we want to look like, we want to understand what does a successful Ontario Health Team in Grey Bruce, what does it look like to all of you? It's not for us to understand that. That's why we need the public's feedback. How do we care that caregiver and provider experience in that journey? What can we learn from others in terms of best practices? And what do we think are the biggest challenges facing our patients and our residents, our families, you know, this year, next year and the year to come? We know we have aging populations and young populations, or we're just not set in the right aspect of coordinating care for everybody at the same time in the current framework. How do we look at our health equity and social determinants of health? And what digital solutions would we recommend for moving forward? We can really try to provide the best care to patients in their homes, if that's where they prefer to get it. But certainly, we know there's a lot of heavy lifting to do, and we've been naive. Happening, you know, in the next year or two, this is a thorough process. We need everyone's feedback and consultation. So at the end of the day, when we are mature, approved Ontario Health Team for Grey Bruce, everyone has a vested interest in it, because we've all helped form and carved out that, that journey together. Next slide, please. So when we look at engagement for our future population and priority populations, we have to understand how are we going to be improving those care transitions? And what support are we going to be prompting the people to make their experience better? What opportunities for potential barriers do we have engaging those year-old populations? Is transportation an issue? Is food security or instability issues, housing issues, homelessness? Really, an onion analogy, when you start to peel away the layers, you really help to understand the patient's experience and view things through the lens to help the system work a bit more effective. Next slide, please. So that concludes the presentation. I know that we have some time allotted. I know you guys are running busy, but we certainly enjoy an opportunity to have any questions and help hopefully provide some clearer answers and looking for opportunities to come back in the future to engage Gray County, as well as any of your local municipalities. We certainly would like to keep, keep you up to date as we move forward as well. So Dana and I stand to for questions.
Okay, well, thanks, Gerry and Dana. We'll need a lot of, a lot of information there. And it looks like it's, could be moving in the right direction. So is there questions from, from council, county councillors?
Yes. Councillor Desai, councillor Soever, councillor Potter, and councillor Millen?
Okay, I'm writing them all down here. So, okay, we'll start off with councillor Desai. Go ahead, councillor Desai.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. Thanks, Gerry and Dana, for the presentation. One question that I had was, we're increasingly looking at rural medicine changing, how it's administered, really. We were getting a new hospital in Markdale, but at the same time, the new hospital has fewer beds than the one we have right now. So more, more and more home care is sort of coming forward as a, as a great way to administer medicine and healthcare to our population. So can, can you tell me a little bit more about how the OHT would be looking at making home care a priority? Thank you.
Okay, Gerry or Dana?
Sure, maybe in the first instance, I can turn it over to Dana, because it has the hospital connotation, and I'd just try to stay in my lane when it comes to that.
So certainly, home care is definitely something that we are, we are definitely hearing from our engagement. We have had surveys sent out to seven surveys on our, on our social media platforms. And so far, seven hundred and seventy-five have been filled out. So, so in terms of your point in less hospitalization and more push to the community, it is certainly something that we are aware of, that we know needs to be changed. We are looking at how can we better integrate home care? Where does it best fit? Does it fit better with primary care so that there's that seamless transition? So that your primary care provider and your home care provider are working in lockstep? Is there opportunities to ensure that there is adequate feedback? Oftentimes, what we know is we're not, patients aren't able to share that, that things in their home aren't working as well as they should. And, you know, then they unfortunately end back on the doorstep of the hospital. You know, having that one number to call if there are issues, especially with respect to home care, is something. The other thing that I think we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge with respect to home care is health human resources. And I think this is something that is also plaguing, you know, hospitals and also long-term care. But ensuring that we have an adequate workforce to provide that, that home care. And further to that statement is ensuring that it's adequate conditions around that employment, that we don't see, you know, movement from one, from one job to the other, that there's consistency, all of those things. So to Gerry's point, home care is multi-layered. And it is certainly something that our OHT is looking at and are hoping to work very closely with primary care and service providers to look at how we can do.
Okay, any follow-up on that, councillor Desai?
No follow-up right now. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Thanks, Dana. Moving on into councillor Soever.
Yes, and I think this is a great initiative. Just a question of, like, obviously, we can't deliver healthcare without having doctors. And I think you just touched upon the other people that we need to deliver it. So where does doctor recruitment fit in on all of this? That's the first question. And then I have another question. We do have a doctor recruitment committee, but it's actually done in collaboration with other municipalities, some of which are in Simcoe County. And being on the border here, many of our, while even the doctors that are in Clarksburg in Grey Bruce are members of the Collingwood Family Health Team. And I think they're working on an Ontario Health Team that is based out of the Collingwood Hospital, or not based. Uh, based out of the Collingwood Hospital or not based out of, but you know, it's it's being organized largely by that. So many of our residents, myself included, uh do have medical practitioners, doctors and and stuff. Um, in Collingwood. And so how do these Ontario, where are the boundaries of these Ontario Health Teams gonna be? And and how do communities like the town of Blue Mountains, which look. Maybe the Collingwood and Owen Sound. I know I recently had some health issues and it was great to pick and choose. You know, I went to the Meaford Hospital initially and then ended up in St. Mary's and. But then when I had issues with a wound, then I was over at the Collingwood Hospital. So I was actually, in the new system, I would be dealing with two Ontario Health Teams. This time I was dealing with two Linds, which was great fun because uh. It it caused a great deal of consternation when I was filling out forms and he said, well, you're not in this Lynn. I said, well, yeah, but my doctor is. So how does that border issue get resolved?
Yeah, I I can start if that's okay, Warden. Um. Backwards and so the, those very example of what you described, the councillor is a big challenge in the whole system that we're trying to redesign. So looking at the virtual and the e-technology, so that way if you are traveling between, say, previous Lynn jurisdictions or the proposed geographic. Of Gray Bruce for our proposed Ontario Health Team. Is that no matter where a patient travels to access their healthcare at any point in the system that they have to touch or may need to come in touch. Everybody within the system understands who you are and why you're there. And right now, the systems don't even communicate. So for example, I'm a Concarden, the family health team is thirty minutes away. Another family health team is thirty minutes away. We share some of the patients, our computer systems do not talk. We're still back to archaic paper faxing. So we understand this is not working and people fall through the cracks. And this is all these examples are how it's easy it is to fall through the cracks and it's unintentional. But the system has been designed for maybe more bureaucracy and administrative tasks than had been for the patient journey or the patient experience. When we look at provider recruitment, we want to look at, you know, a great opportunity that was held in Owen Sound about two years ago. And it was led by the uh in part by the previous Lynn and all of the stakeholders and the mayor Columbus was there. And we we came away from that with a great understanding that maybe as part of successful planning. We should maybe have a blinders off approach and have a regional uh a a plan to provider engagement to include physicians, nurse practitioners, specialists and other allied health staff. Everyone has an important role to play, whether they're Cog or Spoke, left hand or right hand. It's all complimentary service. So looking forward and how we, how we need to approach this is that if you're receiving care in one jurisdiction, hopefully through the virtual technology and the. Uh, one digital platform, hopefully getting all systems and all providers on one uh E-MR system. So we always understand where the patient journey lies and where you're at in that continuum. Um, and the second part is, is how do we recruit doctors here? And part of this exercise with Ontario Health Teams is that there's not necessarily a whole bunch of new money right away. We have to operate within our existing funding envelope. And as we try to restructure these care pathways and understand the patient journey. And through a term called resource dilution, we'll understand where some of the sensitivities and pressure points are. And that puts us in a position to petition and make application for additional funding based on business case. So it will be slow and iterative, but to your point councillor, this is one of the motivations of why the Ontario Health Teams have been created. Because of all those sensitivities that you've expressed.
Thank you.
It's important to know, just to add on, that, you know, um, we may, we may not have the answers today. But the the point of the Ontario Health Teams is coming together, recognizing these, these problems that are being raised by. By our community leaders and working on them and advocating for funding. So I think what's important is we're talking about health solutions like we've never talked before. And we're talking from a broader system perspective. We're not all in silos looking out for our own communities. We're looking out for, for everyone, especially the, all across Gray Bruce and how can we make it better?
Sounds like you're gonna get the left hand and the right hand talking. Councillor Whoever, did any follow-up there?
No, I'm fine. Thanks.
Okay, I think councillor Potter, I mean, I encompass uh to the list. So I got councillor Potter, Millen and and councillor Columbus on the list. So go ahead councillor Potter.
Uh, thank you, Warden. Uh, through you, uh, a comment first. Earlier in this meeting, I left for six minutes and that six minutes was to confer with my, uh, one of my doctors in Owen Sound. Who was able to tell me the results of an MRI, a CAT scan and blood work. Uh, in a matter of six minutes via a phone call instead of me having to go and and sit in in the waiting room in Owen Sound. Uh, which I think leads to where I have another doctor from Barry that I have to file OTN. My point there is that that is, at least in part, the future of medical care. And and we can't do that. You mentioned digitalization and we can't do that without, without a serious effort. To improve our broadband uh across our area. We are an area where we have a lot of rural. Uh, communities and small communities that that don't have good broadband service. Uh, I have visiting nurses every once in a while. They rely on broadband to get treatment orders and that kind of thing when they're out in the field. So uh, that's going to be more and more important and I hope that that will be an important part of. Uh, of what you uh put forth in the future. Because it is going to be an answer. We, we struggle to recruit doctors, but one of the ways we can. We can perhaps fight that is by making doctors more available. Doctors and practitioners of all kinds more available digitally and and through virtual meetings. And maybe you could comment on on where you're going with that.
I I could offer, I I don't know if it'd be the best answer, but sorry, I can offer that this has been a sensitivity specifically raised. You know, the vast rural landscape that we have, especially closer to the north. Um, when we look at, you know, opportunities that are amazing with community paramedicine and remote patient monitoring, these really become hampered, even though they're well-intentioned. So in terms of the Ontario Health Team in Gray Bruce, we know that a recent announcement by the Ford Government, the current government, sorry, is that. There is a huge investment coming to broadband for rural areas and we're hoping that that's also gonna be part of this strategy. So to your point councillor Potter, I I do believe that there is some mediation or some recognition of these uh remedial opportunities in the rural area. And we're hoping to capitalize on that as part of our digital strategy. Um, but thank you for raising that.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Potter. I don't know if anybody has seen that new commercial on TV, the new Fitbit and all the health-related things that can do. Uh, by wearing that Fitbit and uh, I think it's even got a thing on there about stress. And that, so, okay, so moving on to councillor Millen and I think councillor Keating is on the list as well. So go ahead councillor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden and uh, thank you Jerry and Dana for your presentation. Um, you're absolutely correct. The challenges in the healthcare system are legion and they're well documented and they're well discussed. And this uh, hopefully, this initiative, the Ontario Health Team will will sort some of that out. But my question and my concern is it keep coming back to governance. And I, and I know uh there, I think there was a comment in the presentation earlier about, we don't want to get bogged down into the weeds of governance. But at the end of the day, somebody has to be a. To the patient and to the taxpayer. And so, you know, I'm wondering, you 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 indicated that the government has made it quite clear. That they're not asking for a new corporation or an alliance or an amalgamation or whatever you want to call it. They're not asking for that. But my understanding is that the government is saying, we want to hand a health team one check. And they will disperse it to the various service providers. So if that is indeed the case, what organization within the health team is gonna receive those funds and disperse them? Because if the health team itself has, or the committee, or whatever you want to call it, has no authority. Where is the accountability for those funds gonna lie? That's my fundamental concern and I, and I, I've asked it a number of times and I believe I asked you good folks the, the same question. The last time you presented and I still have not heard a real good answer to those concerns. Can you help me?
Sure, so, um, I hear ya. Um, because we, we definitely get this and that's certainly something that we have had that conversation with the ministry. Because we hear it uh from, from all of, from our community, right? Um, so the government has said, um, you know, a collaborative decision-making arrangement. And part of that is right now determining, um, you know, who is, because we actually do have funds right now. That all of our participating, participating organizations have put zero point one percent of our budgets to. So those funds are actually being managed by the planning committee as, as such right now. Um, with respect to your point about one, one drop. That's what they want to be able to do is one drop of money instead of dropping it to H D H, then to the Concarden Family Health Team and so on and so forth. That is at its most mature state. And if you go back to that um decision-making framework, by then. There will be um a collaborative decision-making group of community leaders. We are too early in the stage uh for. To determine this because we actually don't know our scope of decision-making. That has yet to be determined. There's lots of unknowns at this point that we can't just land on um. On, on, on a, on a governance model. It will come and and I know that's probably difficult. As someone who uh is uh very, very familiar with governance, um, that it's going to come, it's going to grow. Uh, right now, when you, when you ask about accountability, who are we accountable to? Our boards, our individual boards who are saying, who are overseeing um my work as a CEO, Jerry's work as a CEO. And how we are using those funds. We are providing um our boards um with updates ongoing. Uh, our boards are getting together and they are talking about this kind of thing. So um, I I don't want you to have the impression that it's, that it's sort of willy-nilly with, with, with all of this. It's not. Uh, we are accountable to our boards and we will be, once we move to the next phase, we will be accountable to the public for um moving. And hitting targets. And as we move along, we're gonna switch. It's not, it's not going to be a bunch of administrators. It will be community leaders with some administrative um represent, representation. And how that will look, I'm not sure, but it will get there.
If, if I could.
What, Jerry?
Sorry, uh, Mr. Warden, just to add to Dana's point as well that uh, in the documents that we have from the ministry that are prescriptive. The only uh understanding at this point that they've been very explicit with is that we have to figure out if we get approved to move forward. Where does the implementation funding land? And so that would probably go through the same channels that is being managed right now uh with the hospitals. Because we have our trans uh transformationally that we just hired. She starts actually on Monday, Jennifer Keyhole. And so that is her first full-time employee of the Ontario Health Team. And she's gonna be doing this full-time as opposed to all of us off the side of our desk. So she'll continue that engagement. Her job is to look at the best business practices in terms of governance. And really help to drive the ship to get us there. And as all the operational leaders come together to support that one employee. We take all of our direction from all of our vested interests, stakeholder member, boards of directors. And through our board chairs, they're looking at, you know, how do we have a path to governance and what are the options to get there? Uh, to Dana's point, a mature model for Gray Bruce might be five, six, seven, ten years out. So to put the cart before the horse, uh, it might be a bit premature because we haven't engaged everybody yet. And to assume that we would uh be um qualified to assume that we have caught, caught everybody around the table right now. And form governance around that uh, as it would probably maybe exploit to risk management opportunities to figure out how we're gonna onboard other people. How do other board chairs get decided? So while all these points certainly are not lost on us, we recognize with the broader uh consensus is in the province that is collaborative decision-making. Hire transformation lead, rally around that person to support the work and a full-time effort to go forward. Look at all the best business practices and best approaches out there, synthesize that data, bring it back to us. And operationally with our board chairs would determine how the best to get there and there'll be many tweaks. So it's probably not the best answer, but certainly it's one of the things we're most acutely aware of.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next, uh councillor Columbus.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden, and good to see you, Jerry and Dana. Thanks for your presentation. Um, obviously, physician recruitment is, is, is a big um source of frustration in our rural communities. As is somehow access to specialists and the distance we have to travel and the time involved and all of the rest of it. Councillor Potter really um nailed the comments that I was going to make with regard to. Um, distance or digital and uh virtual um access to. Uh, you know, accessible access to physicians and um specialists particularly. Um, the rural medicine is really uh something that, that, that needs an overhaul. And I think you folks are well, well on the, on the way to, to making that happen. Because there are so many other options um to be looking at expanding a, the special. Or not, not necessarily the specialist, but the types of um primary care um. That workforce in terms of home care needs, in terms of nurse practitioners, physician assistants. All of those individuals who can um help streamline uh the personal care. And and access to primary care. So I'm wondering, um, and this is a tall order. Because it's a, it's a fundamental shift for um, for rural medicine. And is going to take a long time, we know that. But it seems that this Ontario Health Team's focus and uh movement forward is, is headed in the right direction on that. Will you be including that in your, in your looking at providing that care? Uh, diversifying the types of care that's needed in terms of, and instead of just, and not instead of. But in addition to um the physician recruitment that we are all needing in this area. But what else can we do to supplement that to make the um access to primary care so much more effective and so much more efficient?
So what in there? Thanks, Bart. Uh, Dana or Jerry?
You, Warden McQueen. Um, Mayor Columbus, you, you hit a couple key points. I would like to sort of, to spend a moment or two. So when we do look at the, a distinction between uh family physicians and I say this loosely. So in an urban, in an urban context, you have a family physician who, you know, uh, might just to have a family practice and they go home. And I'm not trying to uh dumb it down, but for my understanding, when we look at a rural context, you have a family physician. Who not only provides clinic access, but typically they are the eMERGE physician. They also provide a weekend inpatient rounds. So that's a twenty-four seven job as well. In addition to providing eMERGE coverage, they're second on call. So there's always a doctor who's always uh local to, to back up. And then when you factor in those, uh, you know, that's about like maybe ninety-five percent of the role. Then you look at, we have coroner services. We have a long-term cares that we have oversight of. Um, we're teaching, teaching facilities, uh, teaching institutions. Most of our rural physicians are junk professors at universities. So um, it's very difficult to understand the work of a rural physician. And so when we look at, you know, how to try to free up some more time with the primary care providers, we have to look at how we're gonna do things a bit differently. So a couple regional initiatives that are happening right now, I'm certainly not gonna solve the problem, but just show you contextually or illustratively how we can get there. So there's a C O P D, a chronic pulmonary destructive uh program that we pilot here, help pilot in Gray Bruce. The ministry is now supported that and that brought funding that didn't take away of our existing services. To embed respiratory therapists in most of the primary care teams. So now you're always being followed up and monitored with a, a pulmonary respirologist as well as an R T. And they provide those reports back to our doctors. We look at community paramedic programming and it focuses Owen Sound and Great County are really on the cusp of this in terms of providing that in-home support. And those community paramedics, whether they're paramedics or nurse practitioners down the road or a combination, depending on the model. They are really the eyes and ears and ears of the family doctor, the nurse practitioners and that care team. As opposed to coming into the merge, the, you know, most expensive cost might be three hundred dollars just to walk in the door, but it's thirty-two dollars to walk in your family doctor. So we have to look at the synergies and how we can accomplish this. We look at Gray Bruce, we have congestive heart failure, we have no C O P D. And and some of these other big-ticket items that are co-morbidities that are overflowing the emergency department. The people still need help. So to the point of the C O P D strategy, there's a, a heart failure strategy that's trying to be initiated from the same company or same organization out of Western. That just got approval for the C O P D program. So I think it's how we work collectively together. We had a frail senior strategy that really was instrumental with the, between Dana's Hospital and South Bruce Gray Health Center and the frail senior strategy of uh. St. Joe's Hospital in London. And what that included, that had one social worker, two occupational therapists and a geriatric nurse practitioner. Who was also a specialty in geri, not only geriatrics, but nephrology. What we saw was a huge intake to try to pilot a local demonstration that care transitions from, when you're leaving the hospital, going to home and back and forth. Make sure you didn't get caught. It broke down the service, the amount of referrals. It was so popular, but what it. It broke down the service, the amount of referrals. It was so popular, but what it did is it proved, okay, three people can manage multiple facets that are cross-trained and are talented and working collaboratively and integrated in other sectors typically not inherent in, in our own business. Those are good demonstration pilot projects that we can bring forward. And some of these don't really include a lot of investment off the hop. It's just a redeploying of existing assets to follow some of these organic streams. So to your point, Counselor Mayor Clement said, this hasn't been lost on us. And certainly I think it's how we approach it through a different lens and rejig the system so that we will free up some of those rural physicians and nurse practitioners times to focus on those most acute patients.
Okay. Thank you for that. Counselor Kivini, I think maybe you had a question.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and I really appreciate this presentation. Thank you. And I wanted to ask Dana and Jerry, if I may, to expand a little bit on long-term care and what your role, your responsibility, your relationship will be in terms of thinking of all the issues that have come to light through COVID in long-term care and retirement homes and also certainly acknowledging that thankfully we have had none of those serious type issues that we've heard in the nude in Gray Bruce County, but we are going to be building two new long-term care homes. And I'm just wondering where you sort of fit into the planning process for those homes in terms of the care that will be provided and the design itself.
So I'll, I'll, I'll start with, with that. So first of all, I think I want to, there has been some silver linings because of COVID in that hospitals and primary care and long-term care are working together like they've never worked together before. The communication has been exceptional. And, you know, certainly I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the leadership of Jennifer Cornell. She has been instrumental throughout Gray and Bruce County. I want to emphasize that in, in really ensuring that patients in our region, that I call them patients, residents in long-term care, their needs are represented. So with respect to the Ontario Health Team, and if we marry it back to the focus of our first year, which is transitions of care of frail seniors, that's where I feel that we will be working closely with long-term care homes. With respect to your, your last question, with respect to design and the care of the actual long-term care, that is, that is not going to be something that the, the Gray Bruce OHT really is involved in or comments on. We'll, we'll be looking as partner organizations as to how can we best support them and how can we work better together? And, and these last few months, you know, have really demonstrated that we're in good stead to continue with that and as we further develop into our OHT. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I think long-term care is, is a specialty that truly needs the experts in their field to comment and lead the design and the care in that area. And I think, you know, there is a Ministry of Long-Term Care for that very reason.
Thank you for all those questions. Any, any further questions out there, Madam Kirk?
Yes, I have Counselor Woodbury. I think he's the last one on my list.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Woodbury.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. It definitely had it in the right way. And I think the way you're doing it is, is great. My question is about, or comment actually, is, is about the decision-making framework. And it does kind of have me wondering, problems we've had with healthcare in the past is that it was run by bureaucrats that we, we couldn't, didn't seem to have much input with and couldn't get across what our community wanted. And in your decision-making, it's executive directors and CAOs that are making all the decisions along the way. Most other groups are just consulted. And the, the chart before it that shows it's administrators all at the first and community leaders coming into it more later. From my experience, the more we have involved at the grassroots at the beginning, the better direction that things take in the, going in the right direction is, so it, it does kind of bother me a little bit that, that the community leaders don't have more input or more decision-making abilities near the beginning. Thank you.
Back to that governance question a bit, Dana or Jerry?
Yeah, so it tends to be the hot potato in the room, that's for sure. So I want to be very clear that, you know, we are, like, we are so in the early phases of this, like, we are just trying to get into the theater to sit down to watch the show. We're not at the show. When we are at the show, that is where we will have patients and community leaders helping to make the decisions of what it is that we're going to see at the show. Right now, at the, at this very grassroots level, it is the administrators just trying to get this off the ground. And we are doing this with information through engagement from, from, from various communities, various stakeholders and patients and resident caregivers themselves. So I, I don't want you, anyone here to walk away with the idea that there isn't even community and stakeholder involvement at this stage because there very much is. But right now, we're just at the very, very initial stages. We are being informed. This certainly isn't going to be something that a, a group of stakeholders or a group of decision-makers, executives, just move forward with their own agendas. We're too diverse of a group. If you think, if you, if you look at the slide of our planning committee, we're too diverse of a group from hospitals to primary care to CMHA, to, to CHCs. We're too diverse of a group to, to drive one agenda. And I think that's important. And we, and we know that if we're going to be successful, we have to engage communities and we have to listen to them. And that's what these, these few weeks right now, we're doing. And we intend to listen to them and we intend to transition to a model that they are at the table. So I, I can't stress that enough to this group because I think there is this misconception. If we're not at the table at the hop, then it's, then it's all for naught. And, and that couldn't be further from the truth.
Maybe, Mr. Warren, if I could add to a few moments. So to Dana's point, when we, when we look at where we're at right now, the ministry has been very clear in that they don't want us to focus on governance for, for the first year for the application. What they've asked us to do is focus on two first-year patient priorities or first-year objectives. And so when we look at to the decision-making, we recognize there's an operational component and a governance component. And the reason why the operational leaders at the start around the table is that for, you know, 15, 20, however long years, we've been sitting across the table in silos, not even able to share $100 with each other, even though we know that we can help each other out. So the reason why around the table right now is we know what our existing capacity is. We have the staff resources and we're hoping that we can move the pieces of chess game around on the board in such a way that's going to benefit the patient first. And with the operational leaders there, with the decision-making authority, we can affect that change to allow and enable that process. Recognizing that the transformation lead is on first, and we have a governance committee that is resurrected. The governance committee with the transformation lead, with the support as resource only from the operational leaders, will help to review and to refine the best governance approach that we need to work towards for that mature state. Right now, we're not the mature state. We're trying to figure out, A, are we approved to go to the show? B, once we get there, how are we going to affect some change with those transitions of care so you don't fall through the cracks? And how are we going to look after the mental health addicted patients who, you know, have been exacerbated, especially during COVID? You know, people are committing suicide as overdoses more and more than have been, been the past eight months. So while there is a focus on governance, we're back to patient care and patient focus and allow our board governors to help work with the transformation lead to look at the best way to get us to governance and what is the best framework for us to work under in the future.
Are there any other questions in from county councilors, Madam, Madam Kirk? Okay. Well, I'm gonna maybe stop there then and thank, this is sort of, we're just want to get to the show. So this is the talk about getting to the show as has been described. And I think probably we all want to get to the show. Just got to figure out how to get there. And, and I think that governance part is very important and Counselor Millen and Counselor Woodbury is to keep that in mind as this goes along that process. And we're certainly, it will work its way through. So at this time, I got 12:22. I think we need to take a break for everyone to go and sort of replenish themselves. We do have a big afternoon. And, and Madam Kirk, when would you suggest we come back?
I'm going to say no later than 12:45. That gives us about 25 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll do that. If everybody can be back here at 12:45 sharp, we'll keep moving things along for today. Thank you very much. And make sure you put your system on mute and shut your camera off. So at this time, we, item five, no, item six, consent agenda. Are there any items on there that wish to be pulled separately?
I see Counselor Soever.
Okay, Counselor Soever, go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to pull item F, which is the correspondence from Mo and Sal regarding the countywide waste management program.
Okay. All right. And is there anything else that wished to be pulled? All right. So if not, it's just the one I have then. I made a note of it. So it's moved by Counselor Carlton and Counselor Millen that the consent agenda be approved with the exception of the one that is pulled. Anybody opposed to that? Hearing none, that is carried. Okay, so that item will be, will come back later on in the agenda. So the first item on discussion and direction is the, with regards to the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan. And Barb is going to be speaking to this and it's moved by Counselor Robinson and second by Counselor O'Garry. Barb, do you have any comments? I know we got a really good explanation there earlier on today and I don't know if you have anything to add.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me, Mr. Warden?
I can.
Oh, that's great. Okay, very good. So today I'm presenting a report. Thank you for the opportunity to have the delegation this morning. Sarah did a great job of summarizing the 18 months of work that we as a collective have been doing. This Community Safety and Well-Being Plan is now in its final draft. It's attached to this report. We're very excited. It's a 90-plus page plan that we now can use as a baseline. Still lots of work to do. It's not fulsome in that it contains all of the information about Bruce and Gray with regard to the five indicators, but it does give us quite a bit of information. So today, what I'm looking for is approval of the recommendation that this, this report be received, that the plan itself be circulated to the local municipalities and for their endorsement and adoption as per the Ministry of Solicitor General. And then further that $55,000 from reserve be allocated from Gray County to, to go along with the $50,000 that has been committed from Bruce County for a total of $105,000 to continue this work into 2021. And so I'll just give you a bit of background in addition to what Sarah provided today. And, and I hope that you'll take the time to go to the link and see the final draft of the report. Lots more that we're planning to do. And as you heard from Sarah, we are doing a roadshow. We're bringing this plan to each of the municipalities that are involved. We're coming to the health unit. We've been to Bruce County. We're here at Gray County. We are going to go to the police boards and of course, work with other networks and tables, including that particular comment that was made this morning by Counselor Kivini about the affordable housing. There's lots of opportunity for engagement and we've, we've just got out of the gate with it and there's, there's a whole lot more to be done. And we are very excited that we are tackling this during the time when we know the most vulnerable in our community really need us to look and work at solutions. So rather than go through the entire report, I know you've read it. I think I just wanted to point out that we do still have quite a bit of engagement to work forward on with our networks that are in place. We don't want to look at any kind of duplication. We are working on building on the momentum that's already here. There's been lots of collaboration that's taken place. We're, we're historically known for collaborating in Bruce and Gray, but even more so during COVID. We've really worked hard, certainly in the social services sectors and others, including health. But we, we wanted to make sure that during the COVID response, that we capitalize on how we are, how we've built an infrastructure to support people in need. And certainly, the, the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan will help us to connect everybody, even in a more deeper and more entrenched way. We know that this is obligation. We have to do this and we're having the, the joint proposal and the joint plan itself is taking us in a, in a direction that we have never actually gone before. We've, as I said, we, we are historically known to collaborate across the two counties. But this is even a far deeper reach. It does require the services of a facilitator. I sit at the steering committee as well as my partner in Bruce County, along with a representative from victim services, representative from the health unit and a policing representative. And so we're just the steering committee. Sarah spoke to that larger entity, many, many representatives around the advisory committee. We already have our plans in place for the next steps and we're looking forward to that indicator report. The indicator report is, they're drilled down into the data, even more information than what we've already got included in the plan. So you're, you're going to hear more from us. We're, I believe my schedule is already full with the municipalities in Gray County. And I'm trying as well to support our neighbors in Bruce and vice versa for them. So lots more coming on this. And we are, even though the, the date was extended, we were originally required to have our plan in place by December 31st of this year. We had moved along in such a fashion that we were ready to keep going. And having had the dedicated resources, it's, it's put us in a position to keep this, keep the momentum moving. And that's what the next phase looks like for us is to have a dedicated resource to keep us all moving forward and, and building bridges and ensuring that we have a, an infrastructure in place to support people. Looking forward, any questions?
Well, thanks, Barb, for your excitement and your enthusiasm. And that's fantastic. I'm going to go to county councilors. Is there any questions, comments?
Counselor Millen, Counselor Soever, Counselor Mackey.
So Counselor Millen, go, go ahead then.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Hey, Barb, great to see you. The, the, the second point of your, the recommendation there in the report, you're going to circulate it to the local municipalities for endorsement and adoption. What sort of a timeline are you looking for to have it turned around?
So I believe we're actually scheduled on each of the municipalities before the end of December. We've already got an opportunity to be a delegation and Sarah will present the very same presentation that she provided today as well as she did to Bruce County last week. And, and the, we have a municipal, a municipal folks. I forget, it's not the advisory committee. Anyway, it's the municipal committee. I believe they're meeting with us next week so that we can firm up what the motions need to be at the lower tier so that we get this done right the first time. And it doesn't take us nearly so long to circulate because we're actually coming to you.
Excellent, excellent. Looking forward to seeing you.
Good, good. We are too.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor Millen and Counselor Soever.
Yes, um, thank you, Barb, for the comprehensive report. And so I'm just looking at the budget implication here. So it says 105 to be included in the 2021 budget, but that's the budget for the, for the plan. So, so we, I understand we're, we're only putting in 55,000 as Gray County?
Correct, yes.
Yes. And so on that, we have one municipality that doesn't, isn't participating. And certainly their taxpayers have contributed to the reserves. So when it comes out of the reserves, I guess. when it comes out of the reserves, I guess their taxpayers are contributing anyway.
Yeah, and you know, as much as they're doing, me for just doing this on their own, we have been working closely with their party when along the way, I'm not sure what their status is now, but we have staff that are engaging and trying to support them as well and and we've been sharing our information and engaging with their dedicated staff so that they could be brought along and ensure that they have access to the resources that we do too.
Yeah, thank you. So they are getting some good value.
They are, yeah.
Yes. And so what what kind of cost do you see going forward in the implementation beyond two thousand and twenty-one?
Good question. We were, we know that this, for us to see the the outcomes that we know we're looking for, there can, we expect there to be almost a five-year timeframe where we have now established the baseline and as we implement the changes we want to see and we continue to work with the parties that are important, that are already involved. We know that it's going to take a bit of time for us to do some assessment and some evaluation. And so in the coming year, my thought was that after this year, so the implementation gets off the ground, the following year may be what what could be the five thousand dollar commitment on an annual basis per lower tier municipality. And that would allow for us then to still have touch points. It would allow for us to do the the surveying. It would allow for us to gather the gather the data and have it reviewed by the epidemiologist. Stuff I can't possibly do, that's not in my purview. And so we do need some outside resourcing to help us with it.
Hey, thank you. I wanted to get a feel for the
Yeah.
end of the size.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you councillor Soever, councillor Mackey.
Thanks very much, Warden, and I just wanted to pass along my sincere thanks, Barb, to you and the other committee members for doing all this heavy lifting. When we first heard about this from you know, the Solicitor General, you know, smaller municipality, we were kind of in awe of how we were going to pull this together. So you know, again, just thank you very much for, you know, all this hard work and getting it to this point. And, you know, I think member municipalities can maybe be helpful to the committee. We've had our, we're having our police services board come to the council meeting so that you won't have to do it twice in our municipality. So I would encourage other municipalities to maybe invite their police services board so it's not a duplication. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. That's a great idea. It's it's actually exciting for us to share with both those sectors. So it it'll be good to have both in the same room. And the questions are really, they're just that much deeper than.
And it goes back to what councillor Mackey says that we're all, and you said Barb was, we're all working together. So other questions, other questions out there? Oh, councillor Patterson.
Just a comment, Mr. Warden, thank you. Barb, you used all my words. I was going to say pooling resources. There's momentum happening, reduction in duplication. And I think it's just great that we've got seventy-two partners involved. That's a huge amount of resources. So I'm in favor of this report. Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
Very good. I hear, see no more, no further questions. The motion is here. It's been moved a second. Is there anybody opposed to that resolution? Hearing none, that is carried. Thanks, Barb.
Oh, thank you very much.
You have a nice day. All right, moving on to our second item on our action item agenda, we have the corporate financial update and year-end projection as of September thirtieth. And Kevin Ruppler is going to bring this forward and we have it moved by councillor Patterson and councillor Woodbury. So good afternoon, Kevin.
Thank you, Warden. Good afternoon, council. Yes, this is our third quarter financial update and our year-end projection is as of September thirtieth. We're projecting a year-end surplus of about one point seven million and but that does incorporate the use of any specific COVID nineteen funding announcements along with the use of the the federal provincial safe restart municipal operating funding phase one to get us to that position. I was planning just to go through and highlight some of the various departments and just a few few notes of why their positions are the way they are. So for administration, we're projecting a deficit of about eighty-two thousand dollars. We've had staff vacancies and staff changes, reductions in staff training, conferences, travel, which would be with those items, we'd see about a surplus of about a hundred and twenty-three thousand. That's being offset by a loss in investment income of roughly about two hundred and five thousand. So council, council budget is anticipated at the end of the year with a surplus of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars and that's some savings and salaries and benefits, travel, meal and accommodations. As a result, requiring virtual meetings and virtual conference occurring, virtual conferences occurring. Our information services budget is anticipated at the end of the year with a surplus of about forty-one thousand. Savings and computer software expenditures, computer hardware costs and reduced staff training and development costs being the main contributors. Our weekly indemnity costs are anticipated at the end of the year with a shortfall of about sixty-nine thousand dollars. This assumes that the the number and length of these weekly indemnity claims remain at our current level. Our workers' compensation budget is projecting a year-end deficit of about a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Biggest cost driver here are the claims and and the length of time these claims, the employees are being off and COVID nineteen again has impacted the employees' ability to receive treatment from practice, et cetera. If your end projections are correct on this and if funding is needed, which I don't believe it will be, we do have reserves for these because these are self-financed plans where we set the premiums each year as part of our budget process. Assessment is projected to to end the year on budget. Provincial offenses, we're projecting a deficit of about forty thousand dollars after cost sharing with Bruce County. Gross revenues are about three hundred and ninety-eight thousand more than budgeted as of the end of September and with Gray County share being at about two hundred and thirty-four thousand. Ticket volumes and revenues are difficult to predict and there was a significant decrease in tickets written during the pandemic and and we're also uncertain when some of these, the tickets that happen will be paid. So approximately nineteen hundred and seventy-one fewer tickets were issued as of September thirtieth as compared to the same period in in two thousand and nineteen. The the decline in all that revenue is being offset by there was reduced costs with court proceedings and other savings and salaries and benefit lines. So overall, there, we're saying the P O A, we're projecting a deficit of about forty thousand. Health units and other funding initiatives are projected at the end of the year on budget. The health units expenditures related to COVID nineteen have been projected to be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty. Provincial government has announced that the expenditure related to COVID nineteen, these emergency expenditures will be funded by the province if they exceed the health unit's two thousand and twenty total budget. Property projecting a small surplus of about twenty thousand. Again, savings and salaries and benefits from an unfilled student position. And then we have some lower maintenance costs and staff training, development, and et cetera. Taxation, supplementary taxation write-offs in the two thousand and twenty budget projection for minute subs and and write-offs will be a balanced position. This projection is based on the estimates that I've received from the local municipal staff and and the projection of a year-end accrual for any assessment at risk. So planning and anticipate to end the year with a surplus of about fifty-six thousand. Savings as a result of staff being redeployed and their wages being, and wages being expensed to other departments as part of redeployment. Application revenue received today is higher than expected and exceeds the two thousand and twenty budget estimate by approximately ten thousand dollars at this point in time. Agriculture anticipated in the year with a small surplus of about thirty-two hundred dollars. This is surplus is projected based on fewer Beaver Grant expenditures occurring. Forestry and forestry trails budgets are anticipated on a slight surplus of about fifty-one hundred dollars. Majority of the surplus is a result of the Forest Festival not being held in two thousand and twenty and therefore the five thousand dollar contribution to that festival is is not occurring. Trails, trails budgets anticipated at the end of the year with a surplus of about forty-three thousand, largely due to trail maintenance projects being delayed in two thousand and twenty due to the pandemic. Economic tourism, these budgets are anticipated to the, to end the year on budget. As a result of the pandemic, economic development term budgets have been combined to best serve our stakeholders through refocusing of projects and initiatives for economy to support the economic recovery. And that was Savannah brought that back in end of June on that. Green Roads anticipated then year with a surplus of about two hundred thousand dollars while revenue will be down considerably to the closure and limited reopening. There's budget savings due to staff redeployment, the decision to forego hiring a summer students and the postponement of the traveling exhibit. Ontario Works projecting to end the year with a surplus of about two hundred and six thousand. That's primarily from the O W and men and employment support budgets. Where they've big, big portion of that, about a hundred and forty-seven thousand is savings and salaries and benefits with staff vacancies and retirements, staff who have retired or resigned were not immediately replaced this year due to the pandemic and as well, we didn't hire a student in the interior works department. Childcare projecting to end year with a surplus of about sixty-one thousand. Savings there, again, elimination of part-time salaries, savings and staff training, conferences, travel and building maintenance during the closure period for the early on center. Housing Department is anticipating a two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar operating budget surplus. Biggest portion of that, we're anticipating salaries and benefits to be underspent by about three hundred thousand. We had unexpected staff changes and then later hiring two staff positions. Also, again, it's a theme through most of these budgets is the reduction in staff training and development, travel, meals and stuff that are occurring because of things moving to virtual or things being canceled. Long-term care, I'm just going to speak as a portfolio overall. It's estimated to end the year with a balanced budget. This balanced budget is based on using seven hundred and approximately seven hundred and seventy-three thousand in the federal provincial safe restart funding, the phase one funding, along with one point one million in prevention and containment funding. And also there was one point one million in temporary pandemic pay to paid out to the employees in long-term care. The pandemic, our pandemic, paramedic services is projecting a year-end operating surplus of about a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. We received a hundred and forty, almost a hundred and forty-one thousand more in provincial revenue in this budget. We've, there was temporary pandemic pay costs of about three hundred and eight thousand, which have been funded by the province. COVID nineteen related wage benefit and supply costs have totaled about five hundred and seventy-eight thousand at the end of the September. And now the ministry have, Ministry of Health has requested projected two thousand and twenty COVID nineteen costs, what we think those will be for the year. So we're still waiting. We're assuming that we're going to see a funding announcement from from the province on this to help paramedic services operations in the province, but at this time, we've not received anything, any announcements on that. Transportation Services projecting a year-end operating service about a hundred thousand and seven hundred thousand dollar capital surplus. The biggest thing there is the tendered award amounts for two jobs come in under under what we had budgeted. So transportation services are in good position. So wanted to finalize up about the COVID nineteen impacts and funding. The COVID nineteen pandemic has had a significant impact on the finances and the operations of the county of Gray. Expenditures related to COVID nineteen have occurred as a result of provincial directives that have been received from either the Ministry of Long-Term Care, Ministry of Health or the Chief Medical Officer of Health for Ontario. This has increased, and this included increased spending related to additional staff, personal protective equipment, cleaning supplies, equipment to support infection prevention and control measures and screening and testing initiatives. Due to the measures that must be taken to mitigate the impact of COVID nineteen on the public's health and financial well-being, well-being, all levels of government has stepped up to provide assistance. The table in the packets on pages forty-five and forty-six represents a summary of the COVID nineteen related funding announcement as a date of this report. As again, additional funding is expected from province to support the county's COVID nineteen impacts and recovery and any future funding announcement from reported to council and future updates. The funding estimated to be utilized in the two thousand and twenty budget is based on the financial tracking expenditures related to COVID nineteen. Where COVID nineteen departmental specific funding is projected not to be sufficient to cover these COVID nineteen operating costs, the the allocation of funding from the federal provincial safe restart agreement, the the phase one funding is being allocated to these budgets to assist these expenditures. The county is expected to report back to the province in March two thousand and twenty-one with details on the county's two thousand and twenty COVID nineteen operating costs and pressures. The overall two thousand and twenty financial visit as well as the overall two thousand and twenty financial position and the use of these provincial funds in a template to be provided by the ministry. No guidelines have been provided by the province on what expenditures are deemed eligible or non-eligible COVID nineteen costs and pressures. Staff have allocated costs to COVID nineteen cost centers based on what we believe to be costs and pressures incurred as a result of the pandemic. To summarize then, we've been very fortunate to have received upper levels of government of funding to help whether the impacts of COVID nineteen, a number of projects, annual maintenance work and filling in vacant positions necessary for normal operations will be a challenge in in two thousand and twenty-one, in the two thousand and twenty-one budget. And we're very appreciative of all the upper level government's help with funding and stuff. It's put us in a a good position here. I'm still waiting to see what the province provides in a template that we report back. A bit concerned about when we have surplus in some budget lines that they'll want the municipal surplus to be used ahead of their COVID funding, but I think we can, the way we've expensed, these are true COVID costs that we've had to upstaff or buy protective equipment, et cetera. But it is a, it is a caution when I'm looking at, I know some of the maintenance savings that we've had, for example, in long-term care where we couldn't do stuff in those buildings, bring outsiders into those buildings due to lockdowns and stuff. That maintenance work is still outstanding. So these surplus funds need to go forward to help fund these in the future. So that's how we've based here are how we retract and recorded all this COVID nineteen costs and I feel they're appropriate, what we're we're asking to use that money for. And and I think it's appropriate, these other surpluses will be brought back to council on a future report for recommendation and how to utilize those. So that's my report and I'll try to answer any questions if possible.
Okay, well, thanks very much for that in-depth report there, Kevin. Questions from council? I have a question from Brian, councillor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And hey, Kevin, how's it going? Good to see you. Notwithstanding the impacts or the the uncertainty around the COVID nineteen impacts to our final financial position at the end of the year. I I just wanted to say, I don't really have, well, I don't have a question other, I just wanted to say that I really do appreciate your clarity in this report and it's not surprising because you've always done a really good job, at least in my opinion, of of presenting where we're at and what the implications might be going forward. I just noted there was one one thing there about the provincial court offenses, the uncertainty about revenue around tickets. I'm just wondering with all this nice weather, whether there's some outstanding tickets from a certain Mustang that should have been ripping up and down the road. Is that a, is that a possibility, Mr. Ruppler?
It's been put away.
Spring's coming. Anyway, thank you very much, Kevin. You always do a great job. Thank you.
No, thank you. And yeah, trying to predict revenues for P O A and when tickets will be written and when they'll be paid has always been a challenge, but it just made it worse with different, we had a different attention in society for that during a period of time and that's totally understandable. Trying to protect people from from this pandemic. So that's totally understandable. So that's totally understandable, you know, the, the lack of tickets or they're written at that period of time.
Well, maybe Councilor Mellon, maybe the, the type of ticket, because there was a lot of high speeder tickets, maybe the, they'll make up the difference. There are higher amounts.
Maybe that's why the Mustang's been put away. Maybe it's in, maybe it's in an impound somewhere.
There you go. There you go. Well, you're the gatekeeper down there, Councilor Mellon. So you'll see it coming by. You can inform everybody it's coming. I have a 10 that is. Okay. Uh, other questions, comments? So just on clarity, Kevin, 1.687300, right?
Yeah. And, you know, 700 of that is from good tender results on the capital side for transportation. And then the other I'd say is a general theme of, of, you know, staff. We didn't hire students. We had staff that had were planning to either retire. Or we had some that resigned that those positions took us. Well, it was difficult to bring someone in to train on a position during lockdown of COVID and stuff. So a lot of those went unfilled for a period of time. And again, the theme of less travel for conferences for, and, and use, and using the new tools of virtual meetings and stuff of save. Save funding and stuff here. So that's, and we all, when this first happened, we were not clear on what provincial or federal funding we were going to get. So we, we, you know, staff, we discussed and decided we were going to try to. To reduce our spending where we could, because we were unsure or unclear how much money we were going to get. And we trying to reduce any deficit that could happen here at the county. So I, I thank all the staff for their participation in that.
So good job, Kevin and staff for, for doing that. I would say next year we're going to have a negative 5% budget. Is that right?
No, that's not right. But no, it'll have its challenges with all the work that needs to be caught up on here as well. So, and I, I think you've mentioned, we've had issues with insurance and other things that are going on as well. So there always is, there's always challenges with each budget, so.
I was just, I was just trying to see what you would say on that one.
We're still working on it.
Yeah, it was nice to see that surplus in there and, and, and it's a, it's funny. Well, it's going to be used somewhere along the way for sure. So seeing there's no other discussion and your, your budget days, January, no, when is that you're coming forward with a budget?
I, I, I plan to bring on the next council session, another report and update where we're at with budget and some of the impacts and implications. To give counsel a feeling and get your feedback on where we're headed. So that's, that's the, you know, the next, on the 26th of November, I'm planning to bring a, a budget report. Yeah, our full day budget meeting is at the end of January then.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Well, we look forward to that. And seeing there's no other questions out there, it has been moved in a second, second. And so is there anybody opposed to moving this report? Okay, that is carried. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, counsel.
I can hear you. I can hear you humming through the wall here in the office here, so. Working hard. Very good. Okay. So the next report is from Kim. And it's with regards to the C O report, CW 17 dash 20, and it's moved by Councilor Columbus and Councilor Potter. And Madam C O, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much, Mr. Warden. Can everybody hear me okay? Yep. All right. Before I start this report, just one comment, if I could, back to the community safety and well being plan. One of the things that I know that Barb maybe meant to mention was how this all got started. Cause I'd like to recognize somebody who played a really important role. The county not having a police services board wasn't really privy to the original correspondence from the Ministry of the Solicitor General. And it was actually Ann Elliott, the Executive Director for Victim Services. That brought this forward and asked if the county would take a look at assisting with all of this. And I know that many of your own people are part of that victim services organization. And I just wanted to give them a shout out for the wonderful work that, that they do. And really how well it's turned out that, that Ann was able to bring that to, to my attention. And that we were able to pull together a group of people to do some really good work. So I just wanted to recognize there are some people in the community who are doing really great things. So turning our attention back to the strategic planning follow up report. So this report is on the agenda for your information, but of course, if you have any further direction for myself and the staff team, we're very open to that. On October 15th, and you've seen the minutes already. You told us a few things and I just wanted to highlight those, those key point, those takeaways that we're using to build on our planning as your senior leaders. Going forward, you asked us to be very conservative with any levy increases. And especially those that would result in increases to taxes for residents and businesses at this time. You asked that staff prioritize investments that will have a meaningful impact on the areas of greatest need in our community. And under the healthy communities part of the, of the project, it really speaks to a number of those things. It's an interesting time. We have housing issues, attainable housing, affordable housing, seniors housing. We spoke about broadband at the meeting and I, I know that we're all anxiously awaiting the. Results of the recent swift procurement and what projects that might mean for, for Gray County. We have a tremendous asset base in the county that we want to ensure that we continue to maintain and to be good stewards of for the future. And for our, all of our residents. And so all in all, I, I think we took away some very good information from that session. There were a couple of questions raised in the session and I've answered those in the report. The question about how the tax levy was allocated and the fact that there's differences in allocation between our member municipalities. So just revisited and summarized that just for your information. And I, as I say, I appreciated your, your input, everyone that day. If there's anything more that, that you need on this. I did include all of the detailed information on each one of the projects on that priority list that we looked at. So where there's costing, that's noted there as well as some further explanation about each one of those initiatives. And so you will use the information that you provided to us as background when we're making some decisions. As staff about the budget that we're bringing forward to you for 2021 and into the future. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam C O. And any questions from county councillors?
See, Council Robinson.
Okay, go ahead, Council Robinson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden and through you, I must say, I certainly enjoyed the strategic priority setting discussion. I appreciate the facilitator's style. And we really, we really had the discussion of doing that priority setting, but also clarity. So Kim, thank you very much for, for ensuring that, that success for, for all of us. I do want to just bring attention to one of the items that's listed under current initiatives list. I'm sorry, I don't have a page number. It doesn't show in the agenda. But this is dealing with the planning section. And it is talking about growth management. So I hope that gives enough indicators for everybody to follow. It does talk in paragraph three on the first column, settlement area slash boundary facilitation. Staff directed to work with municipalities, local and neighboring on identifying future growth and infrastructure needs to bring back. A staff report summarizing findings and recommendations for next steps. In the following column, it does speak about a settlement area expansion, but it does not reference infrastructure needs. Specifically looking at water sewer through cross borders of municipalities. And I know that was the intent way back when this report was first put forward. I do not want to lose sight of that. So I'm wondering if, if there is an ability somewhere to adjust the language. To put as much due diligence on the focus of the need for infrastructure to be expanded from one municipality to another. To provide success for Gray County overall and contribute overall to our Gray County success. So through you, Mr. Warden, I'm wondering if that is a comment that Madam C O could help me with, please?
Of course. Thanks very much, Counselor Robinson and through you, Mr. Warden. I'm wondering if Randy, do you want to speak to what's in the growth management study? Terms of reference, is there?
For sure.
I think that we've covered this and I just want you, I just want you to verify that for me.
Yeah, the growth manager study, it is specifically looking at. It's, you know, in terms of, based on what we're seeing in our communities from a growth perspective, it's more looking at the numbers. But on the settlement, so the settlement area boundary facilitation discussion, Council office is correct in that. Part of the analysis will be looking at infrastructure. You know, in order to support any sort of banner expansion, that's one of the key requirements for what's, what we call a, a comprehensive review exercise. To one of the criteria is to look at the infrastructure and whether or not it's going to be sufficient to support any future growth. So that'd be part of note of the discussions that we'll be having with, with various local municipalities. Just to identify and quantify where, where we're at with current infrastructure, what's planned in terms of infrastructure. Capacity increases, just to determine how best that fits in with the overall discussion around settlement area boundary facilitation.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. That, that's great. Is there, is there an ability to have it adjusted in the language here? Just wondering if that's a possibility. I just don't want to lose sight of that. It's an important component for Gray County and certainly for municipalities that would be considering that option of expanded infrastructure resources.
Perhaps what I can do is in the final version of this, I'll put a link to the report. That talked about the growth management study and just make sure that, that, that is all reflected there. Sorry, I didn't have a lot of room in my table. So, so I maybe inadvertently edited out something that was important and I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for that then. And thanks, Madam C O. Any other, any other comments, questions? Madam C O, there's a picture of the, at the very beginning here of your report, it shows a sign that's out in front of the building. And it talks about, or I'm just going back to it, county services.
Yes.
I was looking at the window and somebody's taking our rocks. We have to update that sign. Well, to follow up with that.
Absolutely. Yes.
Just teasing. Anyway, it's all fine. Okay. So seeing there's no other.
Yes, Council Mackey.
Oh, sorry, Council Mackey, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And Council of Berlin may not like this, but I, I see the Wired and Capital Airport on as an emerging, emerging. Part of the upcoming workload. And I guess, you know, we've not seen anything as far as a business case, you know, to rationalize why we would need this airport. And so for a vast number of people in Gray County and the average taxpayer, I just don't see the, the utilization of that. So I'm not sure it should be on our, our business or work to be done over the next little while.
If I may, Mr. Warden, there are a couple of things in that section of the table that were noted at the, at the meeting as things that were. Had been discussed or were on the horizon. So they're noted as unplanned or not yet started. So I absolutely, you're absolutely correct, Counselor Mackey, that there has not been no direction on that. From this council to move forward with anything. I, it was simply noted on the page as, as something that had had some initial discussion. We couldn't, we wouldn't move forward unless, unless we had direction from you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. See, Council Potter. Yep. Okay. Go ahead. Thanks.
Thank you. Just going back to the question Counselor Robinson asked. Is this sort of a general direction regarding settlement areas that we're talking to all the municipalities? Or are we, do we have anything specific in mind? I, I don't, I'm just wondering where this, where this is arising from or why it's, why it's on our horizon.
Madam C O.
I'm, I'm going to continue to let Randy, because it's this, there's a number of things that are intertwined here. So it's probably best if I let Randy speak to those relationships.
Yeah, we can share a link back with, with council and the report that was presented earlier this year with respect to this topic. And essentially it's, it's to, the tender report was to identify. That we know there's a number of settlement areas throughout the county that in some cases border, border municipalities. We know at some point in time, there's going to be a need for some settlement areas to, to expand. And, and pointed in the report, these things take time. We know that, that in some cases, you know, some of the need may be now or in the near future of some of those areas. And, and we identified a list of in the report. I think there's about a list of 10 settlement areas in the county that, that run up adjacent to other municipalities. And that, that's where it can be even more of a challenge, because we have multiple parties then, that we have to look at potential solutions and options. For how we address future growth within those settlement areas. And, and so the, the point of the report was to. The county through the bridge of policy statement has a role to play in terms of facilitating some of these, these discussions and conversations. And so we were seeking direction from council, whether or not that's something that you would be interested in us exploring further. And at that time, council provided the direction to staff to, to look into this further. And so we've been doing some background research with respect to looking at what other municipalities have done with respect to. What we're calling win-win solutions in terms of working together with neighboring municipalities to try to accommodate and address some of the. Growth challenges that some settlement areas have been experiencing in the past. And, and to see what those options could look like. Not every option will work for each settlement area. And, and so we want to explore what, what's a multitude of different options that could work and be successful in this area. So that's what we've done to date. This all ties in as well with the growth managers study update in terms of just having some more up to date numbers in terms of what. What we're going to need in terms of to accommodate and, and address our growth. So that is, is still also in the work. So as Kim mentioned, some of this all ties. And, and so we're waiting for the results, of course, of the growth manager study update. We hope to receive that before the end of this year. With that, then obviously we'll be having some further discussions with municipalities about what that looks like. And we've already had some discussions with municipal staff about that. And then it's looking at opportunities within some of these settlement areas. And I think some settlement areas are maybe in higher need than others at the moment in terms of those adjacent settlement areas or adjacent municipalities. But no doubt, we think that a global approach of looking at here's some options or here's some opportunities. And then looking at as Council Rob has noted, where are we at with infrastructure planning in order to accommodate some of this growth? I think we've experienced some of that in the challenging, challenges with some of our seven areas where we're seeing high rates of growth. And to be able to accommodate that for each local municipality is very challenging. In that in some cases, it may not have been in the capital budget to accommodate that growth. And then we're click, we're quickly playing catch up in order to try to address some of those infrastructure challenges. So again, is try to get ahead of all this, because like I said, this, this stuff takes time. And so we want to look at it as an overall global approach of how can we better address and plan for our growth for our communities? So that they can grow and thrive successfully.
And thank you. If I, if I can just follow up with a, with a comment, I'm, I'm just. I, I would like to see, I look forward to seeing something more specific so that we know what areas we are talking about. And, and just what we have in mind, because. to do any of this at the county level without the local municipalities being involved in the first place just seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. So I, I hope that this will all go hand in hand.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden, it's, it's absolutely critical to have local municipal staff and local municipalities involved in these discussions. So we've been doing some, some of the background research in terms of what other municipalities have done with, with respect to these similar type of, of challenges. And so we'd be able to bring that to, to the table when we have these discussions with, with the various municipalities. So that's, and the list, like I said, is, is in the report. You can just go through that list. And so it's Hanover-West Gray, West Gray, Southgate, Mount Forest, Blue Mountains, Collingwood, Georgian Bluffs, Wyrtown, Dundalk, Malington, On Sound, Georgian Bluffs, Meaford and On Sound, Meaford and the Blue Mountains, and Markdale-West Gray. And so those are the ones that were named, identified in the report as, as areas or settlement areas or growth areas that run adjacent to municipalities where at some point we are likely going to have to have these discussions and conversations in terms of what this looks like in terms of, in terms of how we, what options there are, are those settlement areas and growth areas to grow and thrive.
Okay. Any other comments? So, so basically, Randy, it's based on your report that you brought forward in, in January and also along with the growth study you're doing.
Yeah, yeah, so the report back in March 12th, 2020. PRCW 17-20. And we can share, we can share.
Seems like a lifetime away. And that was done in the chambers. Okay, so any other further comments then with regards to the CIO report? All right, that was moved in second. And I know Counselor Robinson, you've made the point of maybe some tweak, some tinkering there or tweaking on, on all that wording is to the Madam CIO. And there's going to be a final report coming back, as you're saying, Madam CEO. So if there's no other discussions then for this motion, then anybody opposed to this resolution? Okay, I hear none. And then that's carried. All right, so moving on. Thank you, Madam CEO. So then moving on to the next item then is this is with regards to the economic development impact on Gray County businesses, or businesses three. And this is, is moved by Counselor Hicks and second by Counselor Robinson. And we have Savannah, Steve, Jacinda. And yeah, they're going to speak to this. So, welcome.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Council. As you get a tag team this afternoon between the three of us, wanted to bring back this third report. We've been to you twice now with results from survey done with Western Ontario Wardens Caucus. This is the third and final survey that we have done with them. No surprise, survey fatigue has certainly set in. It is the lowest response rate we've had to date. But given the tremendous consultations we've had one-on-one with businesses between our own staff and our working group staff, we're very confident in the results that we're seeing here. So that's why we, we still want to bring these forward and share them with you and are still using them as part of our work plans. So just mind, Council, that our economic development and tourism working group that has all of your representatives, as well as our community representatives and provincial representatives, continues to meet. We're still meeting monthly, and we are going to continue that straight through, because we're finding it's working very, very well. They have all been very involved in the collection of this information as well as the recovery plan. And then internally, staff-wise, it's been a real team effort between economic development, tourism, and communication staff. So I, we're here to represent as three, but really this is a much wider body that's been involved. So I'm going to hand it over to Jacinda, because she's really the one who was tasked with going through all of the business survey results, all of the narrative and all of the comments. And so she summarized them and has a presentation for you, which was linked at the end of this report. So Jacinda first.
Good afternoon, Council. I'm just going to try and share my screen. Okay, are you able to see my, the screen with the business survey map?
Yeah.
So this was our third survey that we launched to our Gray County businesses in partnership with the Western Wardens Caucus, and it closed on October 16th. With the help of our planning data analysis coordinator, Brad Noble, we can share these results with you. So just trying to hold on a second. Okay, so the top three industries that are represented in these results include hospitality, tourism, and arts, and then their retail and professional services. Some of the businesses also identified more than one location. So you'll see a multiple category in this graph. Sorry, I'm having trouble changing it.
Take your time. Get it right.
Okay. So we, we divided the different, we found four main themes. And it's, we divide them into operating level, workforce, supports, and outlook for 2021. And looking at the operating level for respondents during this time, 35% of businesses surveyed are working at less than 50% capacity. And only 14 businesses expressed a current increase in revenue compared to the same time last year. And then when reviewing the workforce, the majority of businesses responded with a decrease in workforce with an estimated average of 20% decrease. And the hospitality, tourism, and art industries have suffered the greatest job losses locally with a reduction of 172 jobs from pre-pandemic levels. On the same note, 84% of the businesses surveyed did not anticipate or do, or did not know whether or not they would be hiring in the near future. Trying to manage both screens here. When asked about workforce challenges, 41% experienced barriers in bringing their employees back to work. And some of the, the top three reasons were COVID restrictions, you know, physical distancing, not enough business, and then also SERB was also mentioned as the top three. When asked what type of positions they were struggling to fill, the top three again were entry level came first, followed by mid-level management or supervisory positions, and then trades. So in this question, we wanted to find out what provincial and federal government supports they had accessed, their eligibility, and whether or not they needed assistance so that we could all follow up directly with the business owner. Businesses, businesses continue to ask for assistance in applying for Qs, the emergency wage subsidy. And when speaking with businesses, we found that many businesses are, are just overwhelmed with the workload that they're not finding the time to just sit down and review or apply for some of these supports. And then the top three supports that our businesses were using and were able to access were SIBA, the Business Loan, the Wage Subsidy, Qs, the Wage Subsidy, and then SERB, the Response Benefit. Municipal, municipal supports that have been most helpful during this time include PPE funding and small business grants. The supports, the resources that require, that they require most during this time were mostly around the need to support, the support with financial grants, cash flow, emergency funds. And that continues to be the number one response for all three surveys. The next two to follow were supports and promoting marketing assistance, and then information updates on business supports. Oh, sorry. And then the other one was, no, that's it. That's it. Promoting marketing assistance and information updates on business support initiatives. And then the last slide I have is more of an outlook. A pessimistic outlook for 2021 appears common for almost 50% of the surveyed companies. Moving forward, the top concerns for surveyed companies of, of the ones that we surveyed are financial impact on operations and our liquidity of capital, a decreasing consumer confidence and slash spending, concern over global or Canadian recession, and then the last was employee stress and, or health. Having reviewed the narrative responsible, responses of the surveyed businesses, there were a few common trends that were highlighted. The uncertainty of additional restrictions and closures has had a detrimental effect on decisions moving forward. For example, workforce needs, employer and employee stress and mental health were highlighted within many narrative comments. The need to focus on broadband internet in our region was more evident, and actually that was rarely mentioned in survey one and two. New residents moving to our area from the urban centers provides an opportunity, opportunity for us to highlight what our region has to offer. The businesses that continue to struggle in everyday operations are those whose services rely on large gatherings. The very small businesses with a yearly revenue of, you know, under 100,000 or less, tourism operators, and some restaurants, especially going into the winter. And I just wanted to say that despite the struggles of this pandemic, there that many businesses are experiencing, sorry, during this, during this pandemic, there are still in talks with our team, with Business Enterprise Center and our counterparts at our member municipalities. There have been many conversations with entrepreneurs who have started their new businesses and are looking to open new businesses. So there are some, there is some light at the end of the tunnel, and there are some very hopeful businesses out there. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Jacinda. We know it's a lot of information and not a lot of time, but you have, those survey results are in your package, so you can absolutely go through them, and we will continue to use them in everything that we're doing among staff. So we're going to talk a little bit now about what the recovery plan looks like, an update of where we are right now. And before I turn it over to Steve, we just want to start with the Starter Company Plus program, because this has been a really, really key program during COVID for our small businesses. It was geared specifically to businesses who have started up in the last one to five years. It was a transition of the funding that we received from the province with their permission through the Business Enterprise Center. They allowed us to take our entire Starter Company Plus grant program and put it towards this transition program. And then on June 25th, through our council report and recovery plan to you, you helped us double that money. So we were able to support 45 small businesses who have all been in operation for less than five years. And what a difference it has made to see it was a $2,500 grant plus advisorship opportunities and very specific training, which included time with Dr. Era as part of a webinar. And so the businesses had that one-on-one opportunity to talk directly to the people who have the help. So we have seen just tremendous results from that. It's really helped us look at what 2021 and beyond looks like in terms of the importance of mentorship and advisorship, having heard the feedback from our businesses. And we want to give you a quick little sneak peek of one page that is coming up in Made in Gray Magazine that will be out at the end of November. But this is just a very beautiful picture of all the faces, well, not even all the faces. This is only a portion of the faces that this money has directly helped, and it has gone right across our sectors in Gray County. So we wanted to share that because it's really nice to put faces to names and realize that these are the folks that are really returning to the community and how far $2,500 can go. We heard from one business in particular that took this opportunity, took the $2,500, was able to transition their entire business model. And as a result, hired 15 people in support of seven local businesses for $2,500. So it's that type of support that can really go a long way. So we wanted to make sure that we could share that with you. So you'll see a beautiful little spread coming up at the end of November on Starter Company. But it is certainly changing the way that we're looking at how we deliver those services to small businesses as we move forward. So Steve's going to talk a little bit more about the rest of the recovery program update and where we're headed now that we're going into winter.
Thank you, Savannah, Council. So it's been a team effort at Gray County, and we say a team effort. That includes all the economic development and CEOs of our member municipalities. They've been involved in a strategy and implementing. And I would say listening, one of the things we have to do is be able to listen and pivot quickly as things change. So originally, we were trying to get information out, factual information out. We still have all that information, and we have a 1-800 line that's, that's, that we maintain and keep. But in terms of the campaigns, our activity, outdoor activity map did very well this year, showing what was open and where you could get PPE. And we really pushed the patios and really pushed our green spaces and monitored those. And that led into the rediscover campaign, really encouraging people to get out and buy local. And that was, again, very successful through social media, radio campaign, and, and video. And in terms of radio, there was a variety of messages, including thank you for buying local and adhering to, to public health messages. If you get a chance to go on and look at those videos, they've been very well received. Having said that, we're going into the winter season, and we're going to continue on with that message, maybe with a little bit different creative, trying to stay local, buy local, but also balance the messaging on attracting people and, and guiding them as they come up. We have to be careful when we invite people up. Normally in a tourism, that's exactly what we're trying to do, but we know people are going to come up anyways. And we have to try and direct them to those places which are, are capable of handling them. So again, just like in the summer, we're going to be monitoring our winter recreation areas. We're having discussions across the team, you know, what areas are going to be plowed. We've talked to the snowmobile clubs and other clubs on how they're dealing with it. And hopefully, we can manage that and get our messages out. We've also had our business reopening toolkit, which had posters, cards, and guidelines. And hopefully, we don't have to revisit that. Hopefully, our region stays, stays safe, and we can keep our community and businesses going. And finally, we had our infrastructure kit where each municipality was given quickly $2,200 to purchase what they thought they needed to help keep their downtowns vibrant and, and going. And we've had a number of examples where I think Meaford sanitation stations and Hanover branded masks and On Sound had outdoor patios, and we have others participating in that. Going, going forward, we're going to continue working with our team, our communication team. And if things change, we'll have to move quickly. But again, we're also talking to other levels of government about further assistance that may be coming to certain sectors, certain sectors in our economy and our, and our, in our business community, and hopefully those can get it announced at some point soon. But in, in a summary, it's all, the details are in the report, and hopefully you're hearing good things and keeping us, keeping things moving forward.
Thanks, Steve.
That's the, the end of our report. We just wanted to, to bring this back. And we held it off a little bit after September. We were going to come back originally in September, but as those numbers started to increase, the sentiment really started to shift. So we wanted to make sure we captured what was happening before we did come back to you. So Stephen Jacinda said, we are still actively listening. That is the number one part of our job is to listen first before we act on anything. And then it's to make those quick movements so that we don't keep our businesses waiting, because they don't want to wait for us, and they don't want us to get in the way either. So it's, it's standing on that fine line to make sure that we are here to support and doing it as one cohesive Gray County team with all of our member municipalities onboard as well. So that is our update, and we'll be back again in December with the 2021 work plan for you that will go to both of our advisory committees and then come back to council for approval so that we can move forward in 2021. But that's it for today, unless you've got questions.
Hey, well, thanks, Savannah and Steve and Jacinda. I know that Kathy Nuno kept me busy all summer signing those $25 grants, and that's great. It was, I think it must have been close to 50 of them. I don't know. There was a lot there anyway.
Forty-five.
That's great. Yep. So I know it, she kept me busy. She kept, she kept me working. That was good. And I will say one other thing. I know this past weekend with, or the past week with the warmer weather, it seemed to bring an influx of people back into our area, which I guess would maybe help the tourism or the restaurant part maybe as well, which is maybe an added bonus. But we do have that unfortunate thing called winter coming, and that's going to be harder on businesses, especially in the tourism part of the restaurant business. So questions from county council?
Mr. Warden, I have Counselor Desai, Millen, and Potter.
Mr. Warden, I have Counselor Desai, Millen and Potter.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I want to start by saying I was a little disappointed that we didn't have some of the Family Feud style survey says. But anyways, moving. Thank you. There are a couple of great points were raised in there. One of them was with regards to pessimism in general for next year with regards to consumer confidence and so on. I wonder if that may have changed with the with the news, of course, this past week that Pfizer has developed a vaccine with a ninety percent success rate. Again, very early stages, but that is some news in the right direction. So I don't know if if the ECTF team has heard from from members of the business community on whether their opinions on the on the consumer confidence have changed or not. The other question I had was with regards to the rediscover program. I believe that was the program. It was right at the start of the pandemic and it it had a list of all the all the businesses that were that have sort of shifted their service provision to the online platform where, you know, you could either call in and place an order and they deliver or something along those lines. And it was it was a great tool in that in that sense. Is that is that still continuing? Like, is it still seeing the same level of success, the same level of participation today that it was seeing right at the start? Because I remember my my fiance worked at Coffin Ridge and there was a number of weekends where we sort of just went out on a drive delivering orders. So is are we still seeing that level of success or with the economy reopening a little, has that sort of died down a little bit?
Savannah, Steve.
I'm thinking that you're talking about the business and resiliency map, the one where we listed where.
Yes, yes, sorry.
The one? Yes, yes. So it is certainly still live, very much a part of the work that we're doing. Same with the outdoor activity map. Those we don't anticipate are going to go anywhere. We have full plans to keep them up and going and they are still getting traffic. I couldn't tell you exactly what the traffic is on a daily, but I I mean, we could certainly look back and find out and see what that looks like. And then your other question about the vaccine, I think we're too early to know because that is kind of just happened. But if Jacinda and Steve have heard otherwise, I haven't haven't heard much around that yet.
My only my only comment on that, if I could, would be that I think from a business, what I'm hearing from businesses is that they're not doing any long-term planning. Maybe that's a reflection of their of the risk. So it's just short term and and of course you always like to do planning. And I think hopefully in the spring, if the vaccine starts to come out, people start to make longer term decision and investment decisions, but it's everything is very, very short term at this point.
Okay, you need one Facebook page that you can only post positive things.
Well, John Krasinski had the the good news podcast or something for a bit for a bit there. I don't know if he still does that. Thank you very much for answering those questions. And my final question, again, with with the news of the vaccine coming out and things looking like they might probably change over the next three months or maybe four months, are we looking at having a another survey? I don't I don't know, sort of at the end of the first quarter in 2021 that looks at, you know, whether there's been any changes in consumer or in business pessimism regarding 2021.
Through you, Ms. Warden. That's a great question. And we would normally be doing the employer one survey in January, but four county is taking a break from that one this year. So it gives us that opportunity that if we want to go back with a survey, we certainly could. It probably makes sense in the new year. Definitely for 2020, we have no more surveys planned because we've been told, please no more. So we will not. But in the new year, I think when people are refreshed and they've come down off of, you know, Christmas holidays and all of the rush that we know our businesses are going to see over the Christmas, January is that catch your breath moment. So very much we are looking at different opportunities for business engagement. So a survey could very, very well be part of that.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. And I think it'd be a great time, sort of, you know, middle of March or somewhere at that point, because it would be one whole year since since we originally shut down. So it'd be a great year in review, sort of a survey as well. But I'm glad I'm glad you guys are thinking of that already. Thanks. Great report. Thank you.
Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And real quickly, I want to thank the three presenters there today for their positive attitude. It must be difficult to, you know, because of the atmosphere that you're maybe working in. But in in respect to that, I'm wondering, are you keeping touch with businesses that are succeeding because of their efforts to either pivot to 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 a different way of doing business or indeed even to a different business? Because I think there probably are important lessons to learn from those businesses that can help others as well, because, you know, an example I was reading this morning was about the small independent bookstores across the country. Some of them, if they have an online presence, are just booming. They can't keep up with the work. So I'm I'm hoping that there are, and I'm sure there are some success stories out there in Gray and Bruce counties that you're keeping touch with and boosted your own your own spirits, I suppose. I have to say Steve's making me a little nervous because I think he's standing up and he's he's almost pacing there. I don't want to say he looks like Sean Connery, but he almost looks like him when he was alive, of course. But anyway, those are my comments. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Certainly keeping touch with the businesses who are doing well. Actually, Courtney in Business Enterprise Center is probably connected the most to the businesses who are succeeding very, very well and sharing those lessons learned and keeping touch. And right from the beginning of this pandemic, when we were talking to all of our businesses, we really encouraged them to please don't forget everything you're learning. Please don't get rid of everything you've just done to get through this short term period because there's probably a lot of lessons to be learned and opportunities in what you've just accomplished. So that we are seeing continue. We are hearing some businesses are having their best year ever. We're hearing others that have been trying to go through succession who were successful in the pandemic, that years and years and years of no success. And now all of a sudden, there's that growing appetite again for that business renewal and that opportunity. So we are definitely seeing good things. It it helps with all of the the not good things that we are seeing and hearing. And I really have to commend our team because they've taken a lot of very difficult phone calls and a very, a lot of difficult emails. And it is really hard on individuals when we know these individuals because we are so close knit in our community. So they're not easy calls to take. So we, among our own staff, are just such a resilient group and and I owe them the world because we've done a lot because they're strong that we've been able to get through that. But we really do appreciate those positive messages. And we're collecting all of those lessons learned and all of those things that we're seeing. So we don't lose sight of any of that and all going into the 2021 work plan. Since we have kind of a plan A, B, C, and D, because you have no idea which way we're going to go.
Most excellent. Thank you very much. And take care of yourself, Sean. I mean, Steve.
Still standing. That's good. Okay. Thank you for that, Counselor Potter. I think you were next.
Thank you. And a couple of questions. One, as always, Counselor Millen is a step ahead of me because I was going to talk about the positives. But we have had some new businesses open in our area. And I think we can learn something from them as well by finding out why they're opening and what they're looking for and how they're dealing with opening a new business in a pandemic or even expanding, I know in one or two cases. So it sounds like you you have that on your work plan. So I'll leave that. The other one is that I went to the in the industry summary and I only see four businesses from agriculture and food processing. And I just wondered whether we should be and if there's a good reason for it, you can explain that. But I just wondered whether that is a little underrepresented for that particular industry, given its size and its importance in our in our county.
Certainly through you, Mr. Warden. Very much, you know, not included to the level that we would like in the survey, but a lot of the feedback from our egg community has come through those one-on-one consultations with Philly specifically. So again, we look at these survey results and they're very skewed because they are very low. But because of all of the conversations that staff are having, we still do feel confident. So I would say on the survey results, yes, certainly under representative on the overall notes that we're able to bring back to you in those themes, definitely represented in that. And that's through those those one-on-one consultations.
Okay. Are there any other questions, comments? I have a couple.
I see Counselors. I'm sorry, Mr. Warden. I do see Counselor Keveney.
Okay, go ahead. I'll wait. Counselor Keveney, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden. And Savannah, you spoke to jobs lost, but I just wondered if you could speak a little bit to unemployment rates in relation to, as best as you know, where they were previously and where we are now.
Absolutely. So through you, Mr. Warden, they are continuing to decrease. Before pre-pandemic, we were hovering around two percent unemployment rate, which was the lowest in the province for our area. We are sitting around, I believe, six point four percent right now, which is down significantly from the twelve percent we were at a couple of months ago. And we still lead the province in lowest unemployment rate in the region. That story is not gonna gone unchanged. It's not any easier to find employees today than it was pre-pandemic. Right at the start of the pandemic, the challenges are just as great. So Fort Kelly Market Planning Board has been doing a wonderful job. They produce that number for us monthly, which is great, but we can't tell what it is specifically to Gray. So when you get that number, that is Gray Bruce here on Empority area, right up to Bruce Peninsula is the Stratford, Bruce Peninsula area that we're covered in. So as the good news is that our employment rates are picking back up. But the bad news is we're still not going to have enough people to fill the positions that are available today or that are the pipeline because we do continue to hover around a lower number than the province. We're about five percent lower consistently than anywhere else.
Okay, anything else, Counselor Keveney? I know you are a retail business yourself, so you could probably relate to a lot of different things, right?
I certainly do. And yeah, certainly I'm feeling the same pain that Savannah is mentioning in terms of still struggling to find staff. And it's, yeah, it's curious. And I know Savannah is aware of it and is certainly doing everything that she and her department can to help attract folks into our workforce.
It's certainly from the trades sector as well. There's a shortage, as you've mentioned, Savannah, as well. I know that there's a lot of a lot of construction going on and a lot of stuff like that, that they just can't find enough people to run a shovel or a hammer or whatever. Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thank you for the report. I just have a question to Savannah. Just do we know like our numbers have been pretty consistent like this. Do we know how basically the affordable housing or attainable, how much effect it has on these numbers? Do we know that stat?
I would not want to hazard a guess. We know it certainly has an impact, but to give you an actual percentage of what is impacting, that we would not have the information for at this time. And I'm not even sure how we would gather that. Besides what we hear from our employers and and from our individuals who are trying to get here and from our developers are trying to build the camp because of that cycle of not being able to find the labor and now not having the supplies or the cost of supplies increasing so greatly in such a short period of time. So we know it has an impact, but I couldn't tell you to what level.
Okay, I just appreciate that. Just like, because I'm hearing people want to come this way, but that's the biggest challenge. They just can't get into the market here. There's just nothing for well, there's no rentals. Not that we have a zero vacancy rate. That's the biggest challenge. So they could certainly flourish here, but we have nothing to offer them for accommodations. So thank you.
That's why I keep saying about the secondary units, it's so important to to create those opportunities for, you know, rental or other people to live here. And we just need to keep spreading that word, Randy. Any other comments out there? So a couple of things I heard this morning. One was Mike Apple on on Breakfast Television, six eighty news, you'll probably hear him. He was saying that there was some survey out or some stat that with the Christmas season coming up, there's some survey they did that Canadians are going to buy more local or more Canadian. And I think that's a positive thing, going back to Counselor Millen and what he was saying. Yesterday I was just in a the Rusty Star that's in Maxwell. They sell a lot of midnight furniture. And I was looking for something for my wife for her birthday. And I went in there and I said, you guys don't have a lot of inventory. And she said, the long weekend of the past week with the good weather, clean them out. So people coming up here and they and she said, they don't want to wait eight weeks. They want it now. And it's just interesting, the people want it. And so that was the, I guess, when it comes to a positive thing, I would think is is there's to get more inventory, it's going to take time, you know, to do that. So I just find that there is a lot of people coming into our area and we see it from the real estate part and and a lot of that aspect from that. And you know, it's and so another point I question I or comment I have is we're coming up to the Christmas. We've got the Black Friday and we've got the Christmas season coming up. Is there any way to have a postcard type idea where businesses support businesses in the sense of gift cards or so so they go to one business, but then they can buy something for Christmas that supports another business or a restaurant or takeout? You know, so it's sort of, you know, because I think we, you know, everybody wants to support our area. Is that is that something or that along that line we can be doing or thinking about?
Sure. Yes, I'll turn that over to Steve and I think you'll all be very excited to see Made in Gray Magazine when it does come to your doorsteps at the end of the month. Because it is like a mini Gray County wish book. And we're continuing that online as well with that wish book. I really miss the wish book. So I was a big proponent of let's do something local. And Steve is working with the teams every day to get ready for that holiday and winter. So I'll let him continue on.
Great, Steve. Savannah. So so we are coming up with a, you know, it's a it's a version of the shop local campaign and it's all about highlighting, you know, unique finds. And how we're going to do that, the creative around that, we're just, we're just working that out. Before we had, you know, the rediscover campaign was each municipality. This campaign will be more of a broader campaign on social media, but it it will. I think we also want to compliment our businesses and our citizens for buying local and staying local. We hear that from businesses that they appreciate that. If you see one of our videos where you see the business owners waving inviting people in, that's a continued message that we want to give. So, you know, we have a lot of baby boomers that aren't going south. They're going to be around hopefully spending more money. So a big shift pandemic shifted a lot of things in the economy and it where we can capitalize, that's what we we got to do. And where those who need help, we need to help them.
There just seems to be, I don't know, a certain sector, there seems to be lots of disposable income. I was talking to Kevin earlier this morning. There seems to be a certain sector, whether it's those aging baby boomers or people coming up, or they seem to spend the money. They say you can't get a new snow bill right now. So from that sports side, right? Yeah. So, hey, good, you know, you know, and we as ourselves need to support all the local businesses and do our best as well. So that's great. That's so we call it the Great County Wish Book.
We didn't call it that. It's shop local, period, is what it's called. Yeah, it's a good statement, but that that's how we're going to look at it because it very, it really is. And it's full of amazing stories. So I think you'll really like it.
Okay, so seeing there's no other comments, we I hear any comments. So so it's moved a second. And is there anybody opposed to this report? Okay, that is carried. So then moving on to our next item, which is the agricultural advisory committee appointments. I understand Savannah, you're going to take this report. And it is moved by Counselor Robinson and Counselor Keveney. So Savannah, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As Philly wrote this report, so I can take no credit for it, but I'm going to present on her behalf her and together on this report. So this is the follow-up from the August thirteenth committee meeting where council passed to bring an egg advisory committee to Gray County. And based on the terms of reference that was approved on that day. So this report is looking at six candidates have been recommended and to be confirmed for membership on the new this report is looking at six candidates have been recommended and to be confirmed for membership on the newly established advisory committee. So we've got John, Kathy, Brenda, Amy, Lori, and RJ. Really appreciate the chart that Philly and Scott helped put together to demonstrate how many of the candidates actually have multiple areas of expertise and knowledge that they can bring to this committee. So that was just to help visually identify. Billy also made a note that four of these members were born and raised in Gray County and two came here specifically because this is where they wanted to start their farm. So those are, that's a good mix of people to have around the table. So on on September 18th, the county solicited applications, it was online for three weeks. There was two different e-blasts that went out direct to our egg and economic development subscribers as well as a posted online public ad that went through communications. So that was all online. It was a three-week period. 12 applications were received and these are the six committee members that are being recommended for your consideration. So I don't think we have anything outside of that. But if there's questions, we just wanted to, to provide that, that chart so that you could see now who's at, at the table and why.
Okay, thank you, Savannah. Are there any questions on this report? So Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yes, I did put that I would like to comment, but I also have a question. So thank you very much for the report, very thorough and certainly I'm moving the motion for the, the appointments. I would also like to consider having a Gray Federation of Agriculture representative on. Certainly that is is something that, that I would have expected there be some participation. I don't know whether there was perhaps a disconnect in terms of communication, communicating out to them. Gray Federation was aware that this committee was being formed as, you know, and they were anticipating the excitement of it. So I'm just wondering if there's an ability within appointing the existing recommendation for appointments, but also a consideration for a Gray Federation representative. Warden McQueen and I have a meeting tonight with Gray Federation of Agriculture, so certainly that could be addressed this evening and perhaps a response as early as tomorrow morning. If that is something that this council would entertain, I would certainly appreciate my colleagues around the virtual horseshoe supporting that. Thank you.
So this really there, Counselor Robinson, are you looking at moving an amendment?
Oh, yes, yes, Warden. I would absolutely continue with my, my support for the staff recommendation, but I would move an amendment that would seek an appointment for the Gray Federation of Agriculture on this committee. And thank you for your time.
Okay, do I have a second or? Okay, Counselor Kivany? Is on there, okay. So moved by Counselor Robinson, second by Counselor Kivany. Just before we get the questions, Madam Clerk, so we're doing an amendment, is that correct? That we make sure we follow through on that process?
That is correct. So the amendment would be to add a Gray County Federation of Agricultural Rep to the committee. If I may, Mr. Warden, just for council's clarification, the terms of reference did indicate a member of Gray County Federation of Egg, Christian farmers or national farmers. So it would be also a change in the terms of reference because those have been endorsed by council as one representative from any of those three.
So help me out here for, help me out here for an amendment. So the amendment is from the appointment, but do we need to go back and amend the terms of ref?
If that's which, then the terms of reference would need to be amended because it was a one of the three, not more than one.
Okay, so, so we have the most, an amendment motion on the floor right now to add. But do we need to amend the terms of reference first before we add that person or that body?
We could do it all in one motion. And we could do it here because, because committee and subsequently council has the authority to amend those terms of reference. They endorse them, so they could amend them. So if Counselors Robinson and Kivany are acceptable, we could add the, in the terms of reference be updated to reflect that as part of the amendment.
Okay, I'll ask them. And so Counselor Robinson and Counselor Kivany is, is that okay with part of your, your amendment?
Yes, thank you.
And Counselor Kivany? Okay, I think I got the nod. Okay, I get the thumbs up. All right. So, so the amendment motion is on the floor. I thought I saw some hands come up. Are you keeping track of the order of that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, so I do have Counselor Gamble, Counselor Soever, and Counselor Desai.
I thought Counselor Millen also, did he not, did he have his hand up as well?
Yes, he did. Okay.
Okay, I'll go through those names. So, okay, so go back, Counselor Gamble, Counselor Gamble, go ahead first.
Yeah, I think we're headed down a road which maybe shouldn't go on this one. Because we do have these other organizations there that do represent the farming community, agriculture community. And to pick one out of that, I just, I have a really strange feeling that that's not where we should be going. That's my feeling on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Counselor Soever.
Yes, I can understand Counselor Gamble's concern, but the Gray County Federation of Agriculture has a very long history of working with the county council. And certainly I think if they weren't included, it would not be well received by the, the population. So I think we, I would be in favor of including them.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I'm with Counselor Gamble on this. We do, when we pass the terms of reference, we knew there would be representation from one of those groups. I feel if we're going to go ahead and say that we, you know, we have someone who's representing one of those three groups, but we also want to add a member from the Gray County Federation of Egg, which I agree with Counselor Soever, has a long history of working with the county. But then, then we should be looking at adding a representative from each of those three instead of, you know, saying only Gray County Federation of Egg, especially after the terms of reference, I said one of the three. So which is why, you know, I think we should focus on having a lean mean group. And as we pass the terms of reference, we, we knew we would have representation from one of those. And I would imagine like, like many community groups, you know, there's people who wear different hats at the, at the table there as well, I would imagine. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Millen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I, I, I agree with Counselor Gamble. I, I just I think the terms of reference were agreed to by the council. And, you know, there was going to be a representative from one of those three organizations. If you go down to the third term of reference there, commercial livestock, grain or fruit vegetable producer. If we're going to have a representative from every egg organization, you're going to need somebody from the corn producers. You're going to need the tulip producers, you're going to need the raspberry producers, the apple producers, it goes on and on and on. And we simply can't do that. All of these people, as has maybe been already mentioned, I believe, all of the people that have been, their names have been put forward, I'm sure, network with other organizations. The egg community is well-known within their own organizations. So I don't think we have any lack of representation from the six that have already been put forward. And I'm sure we'd get a great cross-section of the opinion of the egg community from those that have already been put forward. So I will not be supporting the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other comments? Go ahead, Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And if I go through you to Counselor Robinson, I just during your, your speech there. Did I understand that they were not approached or there was a disconnect there? If I just have some clarity on that, please?
Well, through you, Mr. Warden, and I, I would ask you, Mr. Warden, to address that. You had some dialogue.
Yes, well, I can communicate what I was communicating to me was is from Jackie, who is the secretary for, for the Gray County Federation of Egg. I thought, or I think she communicated with Philly on, on the, they have the understanding, but they never actually got contacted is what she told me. And I don't know if Madam CEO, if you had any conversations with Philly, because I'm sort of, I feel like I'm getting a conversation from a conversation from a conversation, but I know Jackie did talk to me the other morning when she was out malking about 5:30 in the morning and said that they were aware of it, but only in the sense that they didn't know any details. And had they been approached, they certainly would have put somebody on there for sure. Because I know they had talked about the enthusiasm of it and looking forward to having a representative. So I think there might have been a little bit of a communication issue, maybe that's happened. And so because I don't think they did put a name for it from that simple reason. So I, I mean, in the default, and I'm, I'm not trying to take a position, I'm trying to communicate what is being asked by Counselor Hutchinson is I think from the communication, had they been approached, they would have had somebody on there. That's.
Mr. Warden, if I, if I may, I believe that, that all of the organizations were contacted. Heather, was that through an email through your, from yourself or from Savannah, an e-blast went out?
I think Savannah can speak to that, but it was through our email listings that we have. We do have an economic development email listing and we have an agricultural listing of which members from all of those organizations are on there. So would have received both the, the email blast on the advisory committee along with the terms of reference.
And I can confirm that. All were on that e-blast and all did receive that invitation and information in terms of reference.
And that, and the e-blast Savannah that went out asked them to submit, asked everybody who was interested to submit their expression of interest.
That's correct.
So maybe after that, maybe you can just let me know who you contacted on that, so I can communicate with that to them.
Sure, we can give you the names after, sure.
Okay, thank you. I don't, Counselor Hutchinson of that.
Well, they just, yeah, there seemed to be, there was a little confused on how that worked, but I am going to support the, the motion to, to extend it myself. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody new? Because I see Counselor Gamble on there. Is there anybody new that we wish to speak before I go back to second? Counselor, Madam, Madam Clerk, is there anybody new?
Counselor Kivany.
Okay, Counselor Kivany, I will get you, Counselor Gamble. I'll come back to Counselor Kivany.
You're on mute.
Sorry, I'm now on my phone because somehow my internet dropped. So I just wanted to add that I do feel it's important that the federation be represented on this committee. They do represent a number of agricultural groups. And if there has been some confusion or miscommunication or whatever happened, that they didn't have opportunity to respond to the request for applicants, then I, I hope we can rectify that and, and allow them the opportunity to participate because I just don't want to start this group with potential bad feelings that somehow, however it happened, that somehow there was a situation where they were overlooked. So I will certainly be supporting this motion.
Okay, is it, thank you for that. Is there anybody new, Madam Clerk? Or I'll go back to Counselor Gamble?
No, sorry.
Counselor Gamble?
Yeah, yes, I just want to reiterate to what I said. I have nothing against the federation, they're a great organization. That isn't why I said that. But I have a lot of faith in those names that Jews have picked. Those six have been involved in the agriculture community for some time. And they're very involved. And I feel very confident in what they will do for us. That's all I want to say.
Okay, thanks for that clarity, Counselor Gamble. Okay, is there any further questions?
Counselor Desai.
Okay, sorry, Counselor Desai.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question, there, there is a council representative on this committee, correct? Who would that be?
That is Counselor Robinson.
Right, Counselor Robinson also sits, also represents us on the Gray County Federation of Egg, doesn't she?
That's, that's who I'm referring to, yes.
Right.
She's, she's a county, she's a county appointee for, for this, that's right.
Right, so she's, sorry, sorry, I'll try to be more clear. She's the county representation on the agricultural advisory committee. As well as the Gray County Federation of Agriculture, correct?
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, I'm just, I'm not, you know, wondering if Counselor Robinson could be, could serve that dual purpose of being the Federation of Ags representative as well as the county representative.
I will let Counselor Robinson speak to that if she will. Counselor Robinson?
Well, through you two, Counselor Desai, thank you very much. That's a very positive approach and question. So I'm, I'm appointed through Gray County to be on Gray Federation of Agriculture. And certainly I'm one of the appointees on the council appointees for our Gray County Federation, Gray County Agricultural Committee. So I have a representative role as a politician. And I'm suggesting that the Gray Federation of Agriculture role certainly should come from the membership. But definitely, the, the idea of having Gray Federation of Agriculture on this committee, I think, is a very positive approach. And I, I think it's something that I would really ask this, this virtual horseshoe, my colleagues to support. And, and then we look forward to the first set of minutes and initiatives that come forward from this committee. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Robinson. Is that, okay, just, I just wanted to go back to Counselor Cash. Is that, is that, did that fulfill your, your question?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Yeah, that, I mean, that answers my question. My position remains unchanged. I feel I feel like we're almost showing, playing favorites if we're going to, you know, go against the terms of reference we passed. So, you know, it's, it's, I'm a little uncomfortable passing, you know, being in support of Counselor Robinson's motion. I don't think it's wrong to have Gray County Federation of Egg, but we, in our terms of reference, we said we would have a representation from one of those three groups. They all had an equal chance to, to name or to put in an expression of interest. You know, I, yeah, that's all I have to say on the matter. I have no further new information. Thank you, Mr. Warden.
No problem. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And certainly a good discussion. I also feel uncomfortable, you know, picking one, one group out that I was glad to hear that everyone had the opportunity to, to apply for these positions. And it's unfortunate that they get Gray County Federation of Agriculture somehow didn't apply, but for us to only pick one when there's other organizations that also may want to be involved, I don't think that would be the best way to go. I don't, I don't think we can play favors one over the other.
Okay. I just to follow up on that, Counselor Mackey, what we, I think somebody else raised that Counselor Desai has also asked the, or raised the question about fairness. Is that what you're? Are you referring to all three?
I think, Mr. Warden, if we're going to, the three federations, if we were going to amend the terms of reference, then all three should be invited to attend, not just picking out one. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry.
O'Leary?
Okay, go ahead. I haven't heard from you today. Counselor O'Leary, how are you doing?
Good, thanks, Mr. Warden. Just some clarity from the clerk. We're voting on this amendment separately, correct? Do we have that recorded, please?
Yes, you could certainly have it recorded. And yes, we are still just discussing the amendment.
Thanks. All right. Are there any other questions? And I'm going to have you read the amendment, just so everybody knows what they're voting on. And I'm going to have you read the amendment, just so everybody knows what they're voting on, Madam Clerk.
I'm actually going to have Tara read it because she's taking the minutes, so she'll have it documented. She's actually going to pull it up on the screen. So there's the amendment that you're voting on. And Counselor O'Leary has requested a recorded vote.
All right. So everybody understand questions. So I guess I hear no other comments, Madam Clerk. So you may proceed with your vote.
Okay, so if you're voting in favor, you're voting in favor to amend or to have a referendum from the Gray County Federation of Ag on there and amend the terms of reference. I will start. Counselor Mackey.
No.
Counselor Gamble.
No.
Counselor Burley.
Opposed.
Counselor Carlton.
Opposed.
Warden McQueen.
In favor.
Counselor Desai.
Opposed.
Counselor Patterson.
Opposed.
Counselor Hicks.
Nay.
Counselor Columbus.
Opposed.
Counselor Kevany.
In favor.
Counselor Boddy.
Opposed.
Counselor O'Leary.
Opposed.
Counselor Woodbury.
Opposed.
Counselor Millen.
Nay.
Counselor Soever.
In favor.
Counselor Potter.
In favor.
Counselor Robinson.
In favor.
Counselor Hutchinson.
In favor.
The motion is lost thirty-four to fifty-six.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. So we go back to the original motion. Which is also, I guess, do we consider it still moved in second as well from the, okay. So the motion that was in their staff report with the recommendations of the names, is there any, any other questions or comments there? Okay, if not, is there anybody opposed to that motion? That is carried. Okay. So then, moving on then, are we doing all right? Everybody still wants to keep going. You don't need a break or nothing. Our next item is item level of service policy. And this is moved by Counselor Mackey and Counselor Patterson. And this is being brought forward by Steve, Steve Dillamire. So, welcome, Steve.
Good afternoon.
You're not very loud. You're not coming in very loud.
Hear me now?
Yeah, that's better.
Good afternoon, Warden McQueen, County Council. Transportation Services is currently looking at the new proposed level of service policy.
Steve, you sound like you're on the moon. Or Mars, one or the other.
In my office, so.
Okay, I don't, I'm not sure, just. I guess you can keep trying.
Steve, if you're fading in and out, Mr. Warden, I wonder if we, if we go to the next report and we'll get Steve, I'll get him a headset so that he doesn't do that, because you have to be able to hear him, okay? Is that okay, Mrs. and Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, how do we do this?
Yeah, we can do a motion on the floor.
Yeah.
We can take a five minute break. We can take a five minute break if you wish and then get it set up.
Okay, Rob, Rob has a portable mic that he'll take to Steve's office right now.
Okay, five minute break, two forty-six, be back.
I wonder if Pat could.
Yeah, he's about, he's about twenty feet from me. Can you hear me clear enough? Yeah, you're, you're, you're right here. Okay, I'll get him, I'll get him. He can come in here, okay? Fantastic.
Hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. So. Start again here. Currently, Transportation Services is looking to bring forward a new policy for the level of service for maintenance of the transportation roads and bridges. Right now, we are trying to look at rescinding all our current policies that relate to previous level service enhancements and policies that were brought forward in previous councils. Here for a second. Transportation Services Department is looking to identify what it will do in an attempt to meet public's expectations for maintenance of its roads and bridges and how it will respond to summer and winter maintenance events. Considering available resources and local historic experiences with normal summer, winter events. The policy also is not a reduction in the current level of service that the county provides. But the proposed policy ensures residents and visitors will continue to receive the same level of service that they have historically received in the past. So basically, we're just trying to bring you guys back up to compliance of what was done. The provincial minimum maintenance standards were revised in two thousand eighteen. Staff did bring a report to council back in the fall of two thousand eighteen. And we're just trying to get them formally into a new policy for the county to have. So is there any questions?
Any questions? So, so this is sort of like an update because the minimum maintenance standards used to come from OGR A at one time. Yeah, so you're, you're upgrading them. So, okay, any questions from County Council?
Counselor Mackey.
Counselor Mackey, go ahead.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And through you and Steve, just wondering what the term near the end of the report, it says marginally enhanced risk. Can that get narrowed down for us? And has that term been, you know, floated past our insurer?
Yes, through you, Warden McQueen, to Counselor Mackey. This report has been flown through our insurance department. It's also been flown through the legal group as well. We've gone through a fine tooth comb. And we're just kind of making sure that we have keywords there that will keep us available for for us to defend ourselves with litigation or claims down the road here. So it's, we're any any actions we do, we want to make sure that we have proper policies in place to make sure that we can defend the county and show our due diligence.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Mackey. Any other comments, questions?
Yes, Mr. Warden.
Go ahead, Counselor Soever.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm looking at the definitions in the, the document that you provided, which showed the red line changes from twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen. And in particular, I'm looking bicycle facility and bicycle lane. Now, previously, before we had a bicycling plan, I think we'd be fairly safe in saying that the paved shoulders are a bicycle facility, which means that they're on road and in boulevard cycling facilities that are listed in book eighteen of the Ontario Traffic Manual because it does refer to, the manual does refer to a portion of the road, a shared roadway. But when you look at the definition of bicycle lane here, it says a portion of the roadway that is been designated by pavement markings and, or, or, sorry, pavement markings or signage for the preferential or exclusive use of cyclists. So my question is, if we do put up signs that say bicycling route and it's part of the bicycling master plan, have we then turned a bicycle facility into a bicycle lane? And then are we going to be covered by the provisions in that talk about maintenance of, of that lane and, and clearing snow and everything else?
Steve?
And, and Steve, you may want to, to have Michael speak to this? Or Pat?
I could, I could speak to it, I guess.
Thanks, Pat.
Yeah, Steve and I are rotating chairs here now. I hope this isn't an ongoing thing. But anyway. Yeah, basically, when we brought forward the, even this policy a couple of years ago, we mentioned in there that it is the bike lanes specifically, as you said, Counselor Soever, for the specific and preferential use of bikes that need to be maintained. So the bike lanes that we actually have, which we have three of them, we do close in the winter. The other paved shoulders are basically for everybody's use. So they're not really preferentially marked for bikes themselves. And they're not they're signed as a cycling route, but a cyclist, for example, does not have to drive on them. It is kind of their own, at their own judgment, whether or not, they can still drive in the lane. They don't have to drive in the, in the bike or in the paved shoulders if they don't want to. So, you know, we, we kind of say we don't maintain them in the winter, our paved shoulders either, for walkers or for cyclists. So that's kind of where we're at with that. I don't know if Mike has more to say, but that's kind of where we're at. It's only, the only ones we officially close are those book eighteen bike lanes. Counselor Soever, do you have a follow up to that?
No, that, that explains that, I think. You know, as long as we're happy that we haven't turned like at what level of signage, and we have to be careful, I guess, with the words we put on our signage. Well, you know, at some point, if we're directing people onto those, somebody might say that it's preferentially used by cyclists. And then we're going to fall under the, the bike lane instead of a bicycling facility definition. So that's a legal question, but I just wanted to pick that up. The other thing is the, in here, they talk about the, they've changed average annual daily traffic to average daily traffic. And it seems like the definition of that is, is, is far looser. So I'm kind of happy with that. Because as I understand it, we, we kind of tend to do our traffic counts on shoulder seasons. So previously, when it was called annual average daily traffic count, I don't think we or any other municipality actually collected data for three hundred and sixty-five days in average that as was implied in the definition. And, and now I guess we don't have to. So I guess I just want to know, like, because we are doing most of our counts on shoulder season, are, are we actually reflecting the, the correct class of roadway then with our traffic counts?
Sounds like a Pat question. I can answer that too, Mr. Warden. Yeah, you're, you're right, that a lot of times the industry uses that AADT. But as you said, an AADT is really all three hundred and sixty-five days. And hardly anybody does that, like an MTO counter might, you know, somewhere. But we really use average daily traffic. And the counts that we do in the shoulder seasons are basically to reflect what an AADT would be. So, you know, typically, more in the summer, less in the winter, spring and fall is about your average. So that's kind of, yeah, we really kind of use, even we, we call it AADD times, and really we shouldn't. It should be ADT. It's just a kind of interpolated average of what the counts would be if we had taken them every day all year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other, any other comments, questions? Okay, so it's been moved in second. And thanks, Steve. Is there anybody opposed to this resolution? Okay, that is carried. All right, moving on then to report, I think Pat, I think you're going to take this one, yes. With regards to TRCW twenty-seven twenty, this is with regards to the roundabout. And it's moved by Counselor Soever and second by Counselor Potter. And Pat, you have the floor.
Just going to try to share my screen here.
Okay.
Can you see that?
Sure can, yep. And you're coming in loud and clear.
All right. Now I just need to find the other part that I can turn the page here. Okay, let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay, all right, here, here it is here. Everyone's okay, they can see that, that title page, right?
Yep. Okay, so this is about the gray road nineteen and twenty-one intersection, specifically really dealing with the water booster station. So I'm going to go through this PowerPoint here. And like I said, any questions, we'll, we'll field. I'll try to go as quick as I can here, but basically, this is the purpose of the report. The first part dealing with just that we're looking for some council direction. The, the estimates that we've gotten are climbing with the water booster station for nineteen and twenty-one. So just looking for some, some guidance on who is going to pay for what, who pays for the potential of land that we have to buy to maybe move it possibly. And then who's paying for engineering services and leading the design. Then I'll go on to answer some questions from the town of Blue Mountains, from their motion that I'll, I'll reference, it references it in the report. Just about future needs, gateway features, and then a presentation for the, the town. And then a little bit about the project timing, which has, which has been a struggle. So firstly, the last report we had that came through mentioned about a one point five million dollar amount for the, for the water booster station, which needs to be moved as part of the nineteen and twenty-one roundabout. This is our latest estimate, or the latest estimate from town Blue Mountains, actually. As you can see, it's, it's over two point, you know, up near two point one now. So that's just where we're not feeling real comfortable. It's climbing. We had originally put about seven hundred thousand in our twenty twenty-one draft budget. Now we're, you know, we don't have enough to pay for this. So we're just looking for a committee's feedback. So here is some things to consider. And some of this was outlined in, in the report Matt Mark brought in September. There was no original agreement in two thousand four regarding the future costs. So, you know, they, they put it in the right way, which made sense. There was room at that time. The intersection was, was a set of signals. So you know, it wasn't in the way of anything. So it kind of made sense then. But we didn't really make an agreement then, which we would probably do if we were doing it now, on who pays for it, you know, eighteen years later, seventeen years later, whatever. And of course, the town of Blue Mountains, you know, feels this way with number two, which, you know, I can see what they're saying. If the intersection wasn't being reconstructed into a roundabout configuration, we would not need to move the water booster station. If it had just stayed a set of signals, although there was some options for, you know, a lot of additional lanes that would have eventually got there, a short-term reconstruction of signals wouldn't have necessarily required moving the booster station. One other thing to remember is just that the water booster station is an upgrade. Currently, it's below ground. And the new one they want to construct is above ground, which is, makes sense for confined spaces and safety. And you don't see as many below ground ones built now. Owen Sound recently did the same thing, working with us about they were, they were going to put a new above ground station in. Our point number four is just, you know, would we have known in, in two thousand four when this went in, or maybe two thousand two when the design on it started? That the, the intersection was going to be a roundabout in the future? Probably not. Or maybe we would have had to buy extra land then and put it farther away. One other thing, Simco staff, point five here, they've expressed their belief that they should not contribute to the booster station. Now, that isn't a motion passed by their council. That was just what staff told us dealing with the project. So whether you point back to number two and say it's part of the big project, so we should all chip in. Maybe looking for some leadership from council on that as well. Point six was in the motion, if you read the motion in the report on page sixty, it mentions about the town wanting to be given fair market value consideration. So Wanting to be given fair market value consideration, so it seems to be talking about land. There's some land that we've already gotten through the development process. It doesn't seem like the water booster station is going to be on that land, we might have to acquire additional land, so. They're looking for fair market value consideration. This is our latest estimate, so then you can see before and our source of funds, so it was one point five million we were using for our estimate. And now it's, you know, almost two point one, so. When you go through and figure out our development charge ratio and our net funding from levy, it's just about up here, you know, just about three hundred, almost three hundred thousand or one hundred eighty five thousand, I guess. Additional funding or two eighty five, sorry, somehow that we're going to have to find for this. This is the other, this is from the ten year capital, so this is money to be spent on the project. As of our last ten year capital, so. This million dollars in twenty twenty one was basically for utility relocations, so we weren't really counting on. What we were going to spend on the booster station at that point. And and we still have no idea, I'll talk about it later, what our total utility relocation costs will be. And then we had our three million price here shared with Simco. For the eventual roundabout construction. And then just for reference in twenty twenty three. If the gray nine railroad nineteen four lane expansion happens, we're into about a five million dollar project there that is. That is just ours and and other sources of revenue, but it would it would be all gray. So here's some things about engineering and design, the town requested that the the water booster station be added to our consultant design work. Because right now we have a consultant contract. With a local consultant to design the roundabout. When that tender or I guess it was a proposal was completed in two thousand and eleven. The the water booster station design was not included. So the town feels that if if we were maybe to add a change order to our contract with the consultant who's designing the roundabout and dealing with utilities. There'd be some advantages. That would make it easier for the project to move forward, so here's the advantages, they feel that. One one consultant would be well equipped to handle both. Rather than have, you know, a new consultant running back and forth, trying to figure out where the roundabout design is at. If something had to be moved in the roundabout, say. You'd have to go, you know, for your lighting or something, you'd have to go back if the booster station wasn't where you wanted it to be. So they just they're just figuring it would be easier to have it with one consultant, which makes sense. So there it would avoid having additional consultant brought in. And the other thing is you wouldn't have to go through it, the town wouldn't have to go through a big process to award the work. And it would, in theory, complete the job more quickly. It's hard for me to talk about this job and talk about it being more quickly completed because it's been so long to complete, but. From our point of view, the disadvantages are just, we would be leading an infrastructure project regarding an asset that wasn't ours, which is peculiar. We we've had, we've done it in the past. Oh, hello, everything okay? Everyone can hear me okay? Yep. We've done that in the past with some of our urban jobs where where the lead would be us on a road job, for example. And we just found with sanitary, it didn't work that well because. We were kind of the middle man and it was really the town, the water and the sanitary were really the towns, we're leading a project. And that's why when we do urban projects now, we usually let the town lead. Because water and sanitary are just way easier for them to handle, it's their people, their operators, that type of thing, so. We've gotten away from that underground infrastructure we're not responsible for. And that goes to point two here that we've, you know, we're not into water infrastructure, we don't have any, so. It's just a new risk that we don't currently have. And the other the other thing is, it it and this is kind of these last two things are a question of timing, I guess. Until the utility relocations are are designed, it's going to be hard to get a real big start on the water booster station anyway. They're nearing. We'll talk about the. The relocation designs, but I don't know if the timing is, you know, we're hoping to do relocations in twenty twenty one, it's kind of a tough go anyway. And I don't know if we're going to gain anything. Now, that being said, just back to point number two about risk, we would have to develop an agreement with Blue Mountains if they were leading. All the water booster station stuff through our process, so they're not as concerned about that as maybe we are. And then, of course, the consultant wouldn't necessarily be bidding on the work if we were to award it to them directly. So seemingly there might be some higher prices there you might pay for, but. So that's kind of the advantages and disadvantages of 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 basically us procuring the services of the consultant. On behalf of Blue Mountains to do the water booster station design. The next kind of group of. This slide here is is dealing with some questions from the Blue Mountains Council. Now, this was, these were questions that came through their August twenty fifth meeting. It was before Matt Mark presented his report on the roundabout, so some of these questions I think he's already answered. But I thought I'd go through them again, just because they were in the motion that that the Blue Mountains passed, so. There was a lot of discussion about the roundabout not having a big enough capacity looking forward. So I think there's a general misunderstanding because it is a two lane roundabout. As traffic just flows in the counterclockwise direction. A two lane roundabout basically matches a four lane road and a one lane roundabout matches a two lane road. So I don't know if there's a general understanding that. You know, people see the term two lane roundabout and they feel like it's only matching a two lane road, really a two lane roundabout is matching a four lane road, if that makes sense. So it's always, it's always been assumed that it was going to be a two lane roundabout all the way through the EA process, et cetera, so. The capacity we feel is very good. It's in the report that it could be possibly up to forty five thousand cars with a two lane roundabout operating efficiently. The largest count we've ever had was nineteen thousand on a family day weekend. That being said, maybe that count was low because cars were backed up, so we feel very strongly that this roundabout is is going to be adequate. The other thing we've done is got Burnside to do a traffic study. And basically, they said by twenty thirty, you're still level of service A, which is as high as you can get. So we know it'll be good until twenty thirty. By twenty forty, potentially, there could be some. Some delays, you know, on a on a peak day, family day weekend would be another one, I guess, or maybe a, you know, a Sunday afternoon, people leaving to go home after a day of skiing or that type of thing. Some of those would be addressed by a potential eastbound or westbound bypass, so basically an additional lane. That would kind of keep cars out of the roundabout, so that could be a potential for twenty forty, we'd have to go through and add that at that point. That being said, we should probably Simco and ourselves acquire some additional land. Moving forward with an eye towards twenty forty. The other. Thing in the town's motion was about a gateway feature, so this is just a picture that I got from Saint Thomas, I guess, I didn't know it was the railway city, but. They had built this this. Art piece in the middle of their roundabout, so. We we've been dealing with Blue Mountains on this, they asked us if we'd be okay with a gateway feature, we have no issues with it. Other than it is also the gateway for Gray, Simco and Collingwood. Gray has basically, you know, Gray Road nineteen and twenty one, Simco Road thirty four is there, Mountain Road from Collingwood is there. Blue Mountains doesn't have any roads in the intersection, so. For them to get the gateway feature, if others wanted it, could be an issue, so it would have to be something that we need to work with the town on and with our partners. As it's not really the Blue Mountains road, so. I can understand why a gateway feature would be would be recommended for tourism and just noticing that you're coming into Blue Mountains. You know, it's it's a nice tourist destination and it'd be nice to have a feature there, whether or not it needs to go in the middle, I don't know. We have Blue Mountain Resort still does maintenance on our roundabout middle in at one nineteen and nineteen. So we would need an agreement to take care of maintenance and that type of thing, but that's probably the least of our worries really, but. The other thing we mentioned was we wouldn't want to be a hazard. You wouldn't want it to be something people were crossing the road to look at and you wouldn't want to be something that a car could maybe smash into and. Really do some damage to itself, it'd be pretty rare that would happen, but. It's just another concern. So the other thing in the motion, and it's not in our motion, just about the town requesting that we go to their transportation committee and make a presentation. I didn't really feel it was my place to to, you know, work on a presentation and get it all together and go over there and do a presentation for their committee. If if this committee wants me to go do that, I'm ready to go do that. But it will take some resources and time. So this is our challenging schedule, so step number one, the temporary signals across winds are going to go this fall very shortly. Where we're into to trouble is at step number two, so the utility locations in twenty twenty one and the pumping station relocation upgrade in twenty one is quite a challenge. Simco is still waiting for the final confirmed utility relocations plans. They don't want to start buying land before that because we're not sure if it'll work, so they don't want to go out and, you know, agree to buy half an acre from somebody and then it turns out, oh, no, it needs to be point seven of an acre or whatever, so. I think those those twenty twenty one dates on utility relocations and the pumping station are going to be pretty tough to hit, I think we'll be into twenty two. With that, potentially starting in late twenty one, but it's going to be difficult. And then that just pushes the whole schedule. Step four, five and six, or step four and five, I guess, would be pushed to twenty three and maybe we try to do a huge. Job in twenty three with all our all our work over there, which would be good anyway, really. Just to talk about the utilities, so. Basically, everyone's waiting on Hydro One, most of the intersection is Hydro One Utilities. When Hydro One gets their design complete, the rest of the utilities are going to kind of work around it and sometimes they have to tie in with some of the utilities, so. Just for a cost sharing, just for curiosity, so with Hydro One and Epcore, we pay fifty percent of labor and labor saving devices, which is equipment. Rogers basically is on the hook for moving for themselves. And Bell, we pay fifty percent as well, Union Gas and Enbridge, we pay thirty five percent of the total. So that includes the equipment and material, so we don't pay material for Hydro and Epcore. So back to our motion again, this is that the report be received. Council provides some direction regarding the cost sharing agreement and some potential allocations and property costs, whether we include the property costs in. That being said, we don't even know what they are or where exactly it's going to go, so that that's a tough thing to put a number on right now, but. And council provide direction of the staff regarding administration, which is about that consultant. Do you want us to procure the services of that consultant for the booster station or would you rather have it go back to Blue Mountains and? Whichever you prefer, but and then last, just that the the council basically supports, you know, our design and. Oh, active transportation was the one thing I sort of missed, that was one of their notes that they had put to. We've always had active transportation in our facilities lately, the three meter trail is included. In the northwest corner of the of the roundabout and there'd be paved shoulders to the roundabout. Then you would either you would get off your vehicle, off your bike and you could either walk it through the intersection or you could go through the roundabout slowly on your on your bike. That was one thing I forgot to mention, sorry about that. So that's it for my presentation.
Okay, Pat, and and you're asking for some more than one item here for direction. And just a quick question, the current lights that are there now, how long have they been there, the signal lights that are there now?
Uh, I'm not sure, I, yeah, I'm not sure exactly, as long as I can remember, but.
So they've been there as long as the pumping station is there?
I'm assuming before that, most likely, the signal, they're a temporary installation, like they're not a. But it, you know, which are supposed to last a few years, but they've been there for the extended period of time, yeah.
Okay, okay, so um, there's a bit of direction here need to be given is what you're asking for from your motion. Just one other comment is you mentioned that the Simcoe County staff is sort of saying, wow, they don't want to really be a part of it, but. You're suggesting that maybe it needs to be taken to a higher level of a political level and having that higher higher conversation? Or maybe a letter sent to the the council part for maybe Gray County and Blue, would that be the process on that? Pat, or how would you suggest to to sort of tease that out further to the?
I think I think that would be appropriate, I think that would be appropriate, yeah.
Okay, so maybe a letter could be drafted and because I think they certainly Simcoe County and the town of Collingwood benefit just as much as Gray and Blue, right? It's a two way, it's going both ways, right?
Yep.
Okay, all right, so you heard the presentation, comments? Because there is, there is a couple of spots and there's there's looking for some direction. I know you brought this forward to us. A couple of months back, I think it was, maybe six weeks ago or two or something like that. All right.
Sir Swerber?
Okay, so I don't have the council, go ahead, Council Swerber, you're representing Blue Mountains, so you may have some other input here.
Yes, so thank you, Pat, for your very comprehensive report, I know this is not a simple project and. You know, it suffers from, you know, there not being any clarity years back on when. When we were actually allowed to put a booster station in a county road allowance within an agreement, so that makes things a little more complicated. So I think this is one of the highlight, this highlights the problems that we identified earlier about this accounting in the town of Blue Mountains. And the need for an integrated regional transportation strategy. Because, you know, anybody that's familiar with what happens at the mountain. At even at lunchtime, you see a stream of vehicles heading into Collingwood to pick up some fast food because if you've got four or five people. And you were to go somewhere in the village, it would actually cost you considerably more to have a burger and. That what you could get at McDonald's in Collingwood and and you see the same thing right immediately after skiing. So people use this route and it does. You know, provide a quick route to Collingwood for people to be able to do that, so. You know, there is a big good, big benefit to the businesses and the revenue that Simcoe generates from them, so I think. We we do need to deal with the Simcoe County on this, now, one of the things in the cost allocation that you mentioned. There's a net levy funding requirement. Would not most of this be covered with development charges? I know there's, I forget how many, well, Windfall is right next to it and there's like seven hundred units there. And I know there's a huge surplus of unspent development charges in in from the everything that's going on in Craig Leith. And clearly, the need for a roundabout and all of this is is growth related. If there wasn't this development, certainly, the current intersection would be fine for years to come. So I'm just wondering why we're showing a a net levy funding required when there is the huge amount of development charges there?
You wish to? Yeah, I could answer that, I guess I should. Yeah, I guess in the slide program, in the slide we had, I had pictures of the of the exact DC this, we just were focusing on the levy because that's money that. You know, has to come really through the taxpayer, so. We do have millions and, you know, millions of dollars assigned to this DC project. As well, so. So, yeah, we could include more detail as far as how much DC funding is needed, because I had it in my slide here, but. Yeah, the majority of the project is still is still DCs. Quite a bit.
Okay, and then you also mentioned that I know our transportation committee is is asked for a presentation. Because they're working on our transportation master plan with our staff and. So I don't see anything in the recommendations or the motion there that. You you said you'd like council authorization for that in your presentation, but there's nothing in the motion on that, so. I'm just wondering whether we should perhaps put that into the motion.
If I may, Mr. Warden? I think I think that. What we were really hoping to get was a just confirmation from council that we had your support for the the design as far as it's come and the information that's come before you. So that when Pat and his team went to Blue Mountains, they could be speaking on. And and from a place of confidence that what they were presenting was what had been discussed with county council and that that you folks were supportive of it. And that's where the the last part of the resolution is is meant to deal with that. And that's where the, the last part of the resolution is, is meant to deal with that, that we have your support. And that Pat and his team can go and speak confidently to that effect.
Well, thank you.
So just, there's three parts of this motion that we do have on the floor. I'm just trying to figure out here. It says that again, the allocation or relocation of the booster. And, and Pat has raised the part about the shared cost or who pays for that cost. And then one question that, that Pat did raise was should Simcoe County pay some of that cost? Or should they be one third partner or the town of Blue Mountains and the town of Collingwood be half the partners on this as well? So Madam CIO, how do we tease that out? Do we need a separate motion that gives us, gives staff or give somebody the authority to, to have that conversation at a high level? It's, it seems to be coming back for what Pat said at, at the staff level. They're sort of saying, well, you know, we don't need that, but should we, we, you know, take it to the high level in the sense of that particular part of a cost sharing because.
I think in the earlier resolution in the previous report, you're, you asked us to negotiate an agreement in principle and to bring it back to you to review. I think through our discussions today, if you, if what I'm hearing and seeing around the table is that people feel that there are other conversations to be had with Simcoe or with Collingwood. Then we can, we can take that and we can enter into those discussions. From a place of this is what council has directed us to do. I know Heather, we could put a, we could amend the resolution here slightly to be explicit about that if councils, its councils wish. To go that far, it certainly would strengthen our negotiating position if we had a, a specific direction from you in the form of a resolution.
Yes, I, I agree with Kim. I think an amendment to the motion directing staff to approach both the county of Simcoe and the town of Collingwood. On cost sharing allocations being supported by council would provide staff with that. Authority then to go and, and write that formal letter to both entities.
Right. It makes it, it makes it formal. Then you get a formal answer back. I think that's very important. If it has to take it to the next level of, of the political side, well, then that could take that next step, right? Okay. So can we, is that okay, Pat? And okay, I got a question from Council Burley. Maybe he's looking to move that motion.
Looking to move that motion. Makes perfect sense.
Yeah. Why should we all have to pay for it, right? Okay. Do I have a second or for that amendment? Do you want an amendment or is it sort of an amendment to the, is it an amendment to the motion or are we doing this?
Yes, it will be an amendment to the motion. And I see.
Yeah, Council Potter on that. Can you just sort of clarify what that is then? So everybody understands what the amendment is?
Sure. Terrorist typing it down, but it will be for, to direct staff to formally approach the county of Simcoe and the town of Collingwood. On cost sharing allocations related to the 1921 roundabout.
Okay. So we'll deal with that one first.
I see Council Millen has a hand.
Okay, Council Millen, I don't see it, but go ahead.
Okay, Mr. Warden, I, I think the amendment demonstrates very clearly. The importance of maintaining good relations with our neighbors and staying in our own lane and not messing with their business unnecessarily. Because I don't think you're going to get a very positive response from Simcoe on a, on a request for any kind of money on any kind of a project. But I, I will support the amendment and I have no doubt that Matt will do, or Pat will do a, a great job in putting our position forward. But I would be absolutely shocked if they said, oh, sure, Gray County, here's a check. Help yourself. Anyway, we'll see what turns out.
Okay. Well, and there's also conversation with, as Council, whoever has said is more of a regional approach as well. Okay. Any other Congress, any, it's moved in secondly amendment. Is there any other comments? Seeing not all in favor or sorry, is anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, that's, that amendment's carried. The other points here is. So the, the council provides directions to staff regarding the project administration model for the project. So you're talking about Pat in the sense of what level would do that? Or is that sort of premature until you talk to have this letter for, sent out?
Yeah, no, that was more about the, whether you wanted us to procure the services of that consultant to start the water booster station or whether you wanted it. You know, maybe to go back to Blue Mountains to get that, those services.
So can that wait until we get some word back from Simcoe and a Collingwood, town of Collingwood, or is that something you need direction right now?
Well, I mean, you gotta design it one way or the other. We could argue about the money later, probably. Start getting the design services.
Okay, so the Director of Transportation is seeking some direction, what you're feeling, counsel. Oh, direction. Does everybody understand the question?
I see Counselor Hicks.
Counselor Hicks, thank you.
Yeah. So, and I'm not sure that I'm understanding what the options are for project administration. I, I'm, I'm just puzzled like what are the options? And then maybe we can give some direction.
So that was back in the slide, presentation that Pat had presented there just a few minutes ago. Pat, are you able to throw that slide up where it talks about who procures, why who procures, who procures it? And the advantages and disadvantages, right?
Yeah. Or does Tara want to throw it up there? Maybe Tara, I could, but does Tara have it open or no? Again?
Yeah, Tara's going to throw it up.
If I can, just to restate what Pat had spoken to earlier. Gray County has not in the past been involved in the construction of water infrastructure. So this would be something that would be new for us. And simply wanting to know if, if council is supportive of us taking this on as part of the overall contract. Or whether or not certainly town of the Blue Mountains could procure this and, and have the design done independent from the overall project.
So I think there was a slide that showed the advantages and disadvantages. Yeah, slide seven.
Mr. Warden, I, I, I get it now. So I apologize for pushing us back. I didn't mean to do that at all. My, my personal view is that it's, it's not a, a business that we have expertise in and we should stay away from it.
Yep, that, that makes sense. So then that would mean that the town of Blue Mountains would do the procurement and at that level. I guess I can speak to the, they have represented us from the town of Blue Mountains. I guess this is talking about the Blue Mountains. Comments there?
Yes, uh, Mr. Warden, uh, certainly I understand the, the county's position on that. And so I think what we need to do is, I think the town of Blue Mountains position, I can't speak for council at this point. But my own view would be that we would be happy to manage that part of the project. But I also see that it should be part of one project and, you know, because if we, you don't want two consultants. Cause one guy says, okay, this is my schedule. And the other guy says, well, yeah, but this is my schedule. And then if one person falls behind and, you know, it stops the other project because they're not ready yet. So there needs to be some coordination and collaboration. So I, I think we're, we're happy to deal with the risks. So that the county isn't exposed to more risk on that part of the project. But it should be part of the overall project with the same consultant. And, you know, because otherwise you're going to have two different projects really working on one project. And that's in my experience has been a recipe for disaster. The more consultants you have on one project, the, the less effective it is.
Okay. So is there a hybrid way of doing this?
If I may, Pat, I think we can work with this. Can we not?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, it's, it's not the end of the world. Like, okay. Yeah. So, so are we agreeing then that the county of, of Gray will?
The, the county, the town of Blue Mountains will work with the consultant that's already on the project. And to, but they will be responsible for the overall design of the water booster station. They will have to sign off on the water booster station. We'll still have to deal with some procurement issues between the two entities, but we will do that.
Okay, let's put that in some kind of a resolution here. So it's written down here. However, you were, that maybe we'll get a mover in a second or then. Did you capture that, Heather?
Terrorist frantically typing here. So while she's doing that, I wonder before we get a mover in a second or Council Desai has his hand up. And I just will note for council and the public that Councilors Millen and Compass have left the meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you for that. We have, we still have quorum. So council, well, that's being typed up for this other second amendment. Counselor Desai, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a quick question there for, for Pat. He mentioned county at one point worked with, with City of Owen Sound on, on the, on upgrading their water booster station. What was, how did the cost splitting work in that case? Because clearly I'm seeing there's a precedent. So maybe we should follow that precedent. The second one that I have is the process usually around consideration for, of, for land. If my understanding is correct, we're, we're trying to get land from, from, from the town of Blue Mountains. So what's the process around consideration for obtaining land from lower tier municipalities? And that's the two questions I have for now, Mr. Warden.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Do you have?
I can answer those three, Mr. Warden. So that project with Owen Sound actually hasn't been built yet. But they are paying for their entire booster station. That being said, it didn't have to be moved because of the road. So there is, there's a difference there. As far as land. If, if the land that we had acquired through development was basically, you know, free to the county. That's kind of a different thing than if, if Blue Mountains had to go out and buy new land for the booster station. I think that's where their concern is, that the land we already acquired through development, through the approval process might not be enough to house it. So typically we, we don't usually pay the memberage values for land. But then I can't think of many times we've acquired it other than through a development. If that answers your.
Is that a fault? Is that, is that to suffice your question, Counselor Desai?
It, it does. Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I did see Counselor Hicks, his hand up.
Okay, Counselor Hicks, go ahead. Deputy Warden?
Your Warden, I was going to say to our clerk, I don't think that we need a separate motion to deal with item three. Item three is simply staff seeking direction and they, they've got that direction now, correct?
Yeah, that part I think we're okay on the third item. This is just the amendment to give direction of looking after the pump station and the, and the, and the project.
That is, Mr. Warden, is the regarding the project administration. So that is the, and Pat can correct me, that is the administration of the contract for the booster station as well. Roundabout design.
Okay, if it's, if you're going down through each paragraph, okay, yeah, you're right. It is technically, it is okay. But, but we're still need the motion though, but we not need the motion in the sense to answer the part about, and that's the amendment that's on there right now, right?
And Tara has just added a, a very short amendment that the emotion be amended to reflect that the project management include the town of Blue Mountains, working with the current consultant on the projects and approving the design of the water booster station as the CIO spoke to just recently. It'll just, it'll just firm up and provide staff with some, some firm direction from council to provide then to the Blue Mountains.
Counselor Hicks, are you looking to move this? Deputy Warden?
He did have his hand up.
Yeah, sure. I'll move it.
Okay, great. Thank you. And, and I can't see anybody's face. So do I have a second or? Counselor Burley, Counselor Burley, I got. Okay, discussion. This is not a second amendment. Discussion. Anybody, so is anybody opposed to this amendment? Okay, that's carried. So now we have a complete motion. And it still goes back to Councilor Whoever and Counselor, I think Potter were the original movers, correct? Okay, so now we can talk about the, the, the full motion. Any discussion? Hopefully that gives direction for Pat. I think it should. Okay, seeing there's no other discussion. Anybody opposed? Sorry.
I just have, I just have one question. Just so, I, I guess that second part, I don't have the new motion up in front of me, of course, but. So the, you know, we were kind of wondering, do we keep, as this, cost of this thing grows, are we still going to pay 50%? Are we going to maybe only pay the difference between what they have now below ground and the new above ground? Or are we, that's kind of where, where we're at. Like, we want to work on an agreement. I, I think we've got the contract administration and the engineering design will work with. The consultant.
Cost sharing.
But I, I am just concerned about cost sharing. Like, are we gonna just keep going 50% down the line? Like, we were kind of doing that when we were, you know, when it was 1.5 million, we thought, yeah, we'll split it. That seemed reasonable. And then as it grows to 2.1 and whatever else it grows to, how far are we going down the, with the same percentages? That's kind of something I'd like some feedback on.
Okay, so, well, um, and does that have any reflection if with the query or the question to Blue Mountain or to Collingwood and Simcoe County? Would they have any cost sharing on that? Or is that strictly just to moving it strictly to the cost of Blue Mountains and Gray County?
No, actually, I, I guess you're right. Yeah. If, if all of a sudden they kicked in 30%, then our number would be back to what it was originally. So yeah, maybe you're right. Maybe that needs to be decided first.
I mean, that's one, one avenue we can find and follow up is to, to do that. And you can always come back if, if you need more clarity on that. And the other question I have briefly is, is this a possibility to apply for any funding? If any funding appears like from federal and provincial funding, is that, is that something that could also be applied for?
Yeah, I could, I mean, you know, like the roundabout on four and three, we applied for was basically a safety driven roundabout. Obviously, there'd be, it'd be a bit tricky to apply with, right along with Simcoe, we both have to be applying, I would assume, but.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking that if you have four municipalities applying for funding. Does that make an application sometimes more feasible and more achievable just because it's a bigger? You know, it's, it's, it's four municipalities that are making that application. Just something to think about. I don't want to, we got.
I don't know, I don't know what funding would be out there right now, right?
So I think, I think Counselor Soever has a, a probably an answer to that. And just before we get to him, Mr. Warden, I will let you know that Counselor Body has also left the meeting.
Well, we're dropping off like flies here. So we gotta keep moving here. Counselor Whoever, and then I got, I, I thought I was going to put it to a vote there, but Counselor Whoever.
Okay, there, there is a lot of infrastructure funding out and, and I would point out that this, this infrastructure here is serving largely people from the GTA. That are coming up here to, you know, to enjoy the skiing and everything else. And there's a lot more of them coming. So I think we should really push that and on getting other levels of government to, to fund it. And it is a tourism. We've got a good relationship with the Minister Tourism. So we'll work on that on our end. Certainly, and, and I still like to see, as I mentioned earlier, what we can do with development charges. Cause none of this would be required. This is all growth related as far as I'm concerned. It's not rebuilding an existing road or improving it. Cause we, that road is perfectly fine if there weren't the 7,000 units coming in in Craig Leith.
Maybe Windfall should pay some too. They are paying for other parts of the road. We can have further discussion at a high level with staff. And so just to, so full motion is here, nobody opposed. That's carried. Okay. So we're moving on then to our next, sorry, I want to keep moving things along. We're, we're losing people here. So. So we're moving on to the next, the next item, which is an official plan amendment. And, and, and that is being taken care of by Stephanie and Lacey. And it's moved by Counselor Compass and second by, wait, Compass, Counselor, did she leave? Is she still here?
Yes, Counselor Compass is gone. So we would need a new mover.
Can I have a new mover? Okay, Counselor Burley and second by Counselor Potter. Okay, Stephanie.
Yes, thank you, Warden and County Council. The presentation is visible by everyone?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
So today we have a dentum to report PDR-CW-1420. And it's for a proposed county official plan amendment number two for a quarry expansion in Part Lot 36, Concession Two, Geographic Township of Sarawak, in the township of Georgian Bluffs. The current quarry and proposed expansion is owned and operated by a numbered company, 660341 Ontario Inc., care of Herald Construction LTD. So the following is an aerial photo of the subject lands, and then the lands to be licensed for this quarry expansion are located within the dotted line here. As you can note, there's an existing quarry operation just immediately to the north, and so that's the existing Sarawak Quarry. The county official plan requires an amendment to any new or expanding quarry operations, and we require that because we, we need and want to ensure there's an adequate public consultation process and that all technical studies and reports are submitted for, for staff review. An amendment to the Township of Georgian Bluffs zoning bylaw has also been required. And the proposed expansion is also going through the Aggregate Resource Act process to obtain a license for the operation. The license would be issued following planning approval of the county official plan amendment as well as the zoning. So just to reiterate from a previous presentation I had done, so the subject lands are approximately 32.5 hectares in size, whereas a proposed licensed area will apply to only 15.55 hectares and only 14.4 hectares of this area will be proposed for extraction. The quarry will be a below-the-water-table operation. And as mentioned, the applicant has already begun the license application process through the Aggregate Resource Act. And there were no outstanding agency or general public concerns throughout the ARA process. And a joint public meeting was held with the township and the county August 5, 2020. Agency comments received to date for this file include comments from County Transportation Services. There are no concerns. The haulage route is going to remain the same. From Enbridge Gas, there are no objections. From Gray Sobble Conservation Authority, they recommended random plantings should be of native species along the slopes of the proposed pond edge following rehabilitation of the quarry. Historic soggy meaty, there are no objections or concerns. The Ministry of Municipal Affairs and Housing, no further concerns. And from OMAFRA, there were no, no concerns. And a clearance letter was issued December 18, 2019. Comments received from members of the public were from Dale and Christine Mortimer and Tim Oakley and Marcia Wilcox. The general summarization of these comments and concerns raised include future noise disturbances from blasting. They're worried about permanent damage to neighboring properties from the vibrations caused by blasting. Potential increase in truck traffic related to the expansion. Ongoing outside storage, trailer, tractor machinery storage, as well as neighboring property value decrease, dust, noise, and the obstruction of view from the berm that will be installed or created. So to address the concerns raised and to ensure a safe quarry expansion is completed, the following review and mitigation measures were proposed. A minimum 20-meter setback distance will be maintained from both woodlands on the subject property. So the woodlands are located on the south and east of the property. No domestic wells were within the predicted area of influence, and so that's within 100 meters of the quarry face. Regular groundwater monitoring will take place throughout the duration of the active license on any onsite wells and domestic wells within 500 meters of the proposed extraction area. And through the hydrogeological study, there were five domestic wells located within that area, so within 500 meters. And they, they've had consultation with the homeowners so to, to check in to see whether or not there have been previous issues related with the local water supplies to date with existing quarry operation. And there have been no concerns. There are five sensitive receptors located between 225 and 340 meters from the expansion lands. Noise control measures implemented in accordance with MECP, so there will be a development of a berm. The Herald Southern Construction has a blasting contractor who monitors all blasts to ensure with, ensure the blasts are within MECP's guidelines. Blast notification list has also been updated to include new neighbors to the area as well as to include the township. And so this was something that was discussed at the public meeting. The township expressed an interest in, in being included on these blast notification lists so that they can effectively support and help notification of all residents of Georgian Bluffs. So the cumulative extraction will remain at 400,000 tons, which is what the existing quarry to the north is currently permitted to extract on a yearly basis. And the haulage route will remain the same and continue, continue to use existing entrance off Gray Road 1. So my recommendation today is that committees support the proposed amendment to the County of Gray official plan for the subject lands. And further, that the appropriate bylaw be prepared for consideration by County Council. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. And are there any questions from County Council on this amendment? Don't hear any, so it's removed. And second, this is a good time to bring them forward at this time of the day, I presume. Seeing there's no comments, anybody opposed? And that is carried. Okay, thank you, Stephanie and staff for that. So we have one item we have to go back to, and that was, I think, item F, that was pulled by Counselor, or sorry, Whoever, Counselor Whoever, with regards to an item that was from the City of Owen Sound. I think it was to do with waste, waste management. So it was item F, so I think Counselors Whoever, we do need to have that motion put on the floor. So are you moving that, Counselors Whoever?
Yes.
Can I have a second or please? I can't see, okay, I'm gonna say Counselor Robinson. Okay, you may, it's now on the floor, you may speak to that. Correspondence, I guess.
Okay, so we've received this correspondence from the Owen Sound Council, and previously we had received the correspondence from Meaford. You know, I, I'm a bit surprised that Owen Sound is asking for this, given that it's gonna cost their taxpayers an extra about $150 a household. But that being said, that, we'll leave that for another day. What I am interested in is the process, what comes next? Because I think after the last, our last meeting, staff was kind enough, send us a a framework. And in that framework, the staff report describing the framework, it did say that this was adopted by Gray County Council. But I've since requested and received information from the clerk, and I'm not quite sure that it actually was adopted. When we look at the, what was actually recommended by the committee, it actually says that, you know, they, they received the report and the framework, and then it was to be sent to, the recommendation was to be sent to the lower tiers. And the warden and, and I can't find it right here, but we're supposed to consult with the lower tiers. But the recommendation from the committee did not actually say that, oh, here it is. We've got a lot of paper today. So, yeah, so the recommendation from the committee was that report number CAO-GOV 12 of the administrative officer dated June 50 received the petition, position paper, which we received, entitled "Opportunity Knows No Boundary: A Collaborative Approach to Reviewing Municipal Services in Gray County" and the collaborative decision-making framework described therein for reviewing selected services with municipal and community partners be received. And then three, report CAO-GOV 1012 and the related petition paper be circulated to the councils of the local municipalities and be made available to the public. And four, the Governance Task Force Chair and the Warden engage the lower-tier municipalities in a series of workshops as part of the local municipal consultation process. So that was the minuteed and, and sent to council. And then the council resolution merely states that the minutes of the Governance Task Force dated July 17, 2012, and the recommendations contained herein, which I've just read, be adopted as presented and engrossed in the minutes. So there's nothing in the recommendations from the committee that said that the, the collaborative approach should be adopted. So I would like staff to look into this some more. And as we're getting these requests for a municipal accounting-wide waste disposal service, then that we actually make sure we're following a process that's actually been adopted by the county council. There may be something else in subsequent council. I know we looked at the library issue at some point in time, but what we were sent was this framework. And looking at the paper trail on this framework, it doesn't appear to end with council adopting it. So that's why I pulled this, because I would like, you know, it looks like this is gonna become a priority. And I would just like to make sure that we are doing the right thing as to a process that council has actually approved.
Okay, so two things. We have, we have a motion on the floor to receive this. The other part you're raising, Counselors Whoever, is the process. And do we have it completely ironed, clad to go through that process? I'm sort of reading that. So I'm gonna go to the clerk, and is this something that you need time to sort of review, or do you have a comment, Madam Clerk?
Okay, I think CIO Wingrove has a comment to that.
Oh, okay. I didn't see her on the screen. So go ahead, Madam CEO.
Okay, thanks very much. Since receiving the correspondence from both Meaford and Owen Sound, we've subsequently also received correspondence from Hanover. I'd like to suggest to council that, and this is really what would have been part of the collaborative framework if we were going to follow that as well, would be that there's a staff report that comes back. And what I'd like to propose to council is that I write a staff report about what would need to be in the staff report. Going into a significant endeavor like assessing a waste management strategy for Gray County, I'd like to put something together that really laid out some of the considerations that would need to be undertaken in order for council to make a decision and give you an idea of kind of the investment that would need to be taken in investigating the various aspects, et cetera. And I would, if I could, I would, I would bring that back to you in January. Certainly, we do need to get clarity, as Counselor Whoever points out, around how exactly the, the collaboration framework did end up, and we'll, we'll follow up on that as well and get a clear answer about that. So we have it for the future. I think even now, because our governance model has changed and we don't have those specific standing committees anymore, we might want to update this to reflect the committee of the whole anyway. But if you're okay with that, council, I'll bring a report back about looking at waste management and what that would involve in the new year. And Heather can follow up on the other.
Let's put this, let's put this in some motion, so then it's sort of, it follows the trail. So I'm suggesting, and maybe Madam Clerk, we have a separate motion given the CIO direction to write that report. But right now, we have a motion to receive this right now.
It is actually part, it's the second clause of the motion, that staff bring forward a report on considerations.
I'm looking at, it says endorses and supports in principle the resolution, consideration, delivery and disposal systems in Gray County, and direct staff to send a letter of support to the County of Gray. Okay, I'm looking at the court.
Yes, so the. Yes.
I see it. I just pulled the correspondence. I'm looking at the defendant. That's right. Okay, I apologize. That staff bring before the report considering, okay, so that's already there. And then in that report will be a report how we need to fix the collaborative framework also. Is that right, Madam CEO?
And I think the two things could run independently. We'll, we'll, with this direction today and what Counselors Whoever has pointed out to us, we'll just follow that up as a matter of administration.
Okay, so that has been moved by Counselor Burley and second by Counselor Potter. So any further comments there?
I do have Counselor Robinson and Counselor Potter who have some comments.
Okay, sorry about that, Counselor. I'm just getting, speeding things along. Or Counselor Robinson, go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. I just wanted to advise that West Gray Council has also looked at the correspondence from, from Meaford. And if correspondence has not been sent, it certainly will be forwarded on to the county for the request for Gray County to consider the merits of delivering waste collection and disposal system at the county level and also addressing the collaborative decision-making model. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Counselor Potter.
Thank you. I just, I guess my comment would be that we consider various options, because we've already heard that some municipalities are, are okay when it comes to some service, to the service level. So if we, if we look at options instead of just putting everyone in the same basket, maybe there are better ways to do it, but we certainly should look at what the options are and what would be the best, best way going forward.
Thank you for that. Any other further comments? Counselor Mackey?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. Just further to what Counselor Potter mentioned, there are municipalities right now that have a working relationship with one another in regards to waste management. So, you know, that should also be considered. I'm not sure that it needs to be a county-wide, because a number of us have made significant investments into landfills over the last number of years and continue to do so. But there may be partnership arrangements that can be made with different member municipalities. Source Separate Organics is, you know, kind of separate from, from waste. And it, this is a, this is a big, a big ticket item for all municipalities. And it takes some time to really, you know, work through all the, the issues that potentially could arise. So we need to take this slow and get all the proper information and certainly have buy-in from the lower-tier municipalities. Thank you.
Certainly, at some point, communication with all lower tiers too, if, depending on where you go along with this, right? Okay, that, that's enough direction for you, Madam CEO. Any other further questions? Okay, anybody, sorry, who is that?
That's me.
Okay, go ahead, Counselors Whoever.
Yes, I think this is a very important thing to look at, and it's, I, I wanna just follow up on what Mr. Mackey said. And I know they're doing very well and with their, their investment in their landfills and biodigestion. Complement him on having among the lowest cost in the county, and I can see why he'd be concerned. Because, you know, it's costing him $47 a household right now. And when you look at the average of Dufferin and Simcoe Counties, it's 219. So I can see why he doesn't want to put an additional cost like that on his taxpayers of almost another extra $180 a household. And I think many of us that have invested are in the same boat, and, and I'm kind of. And I, I'm kind of interested in, in, to see what the results of the. Investigation by the CEO shows. In that, the, you know, some of the municipalities, like I hear Hanover now, they're at sixty-five dollars, and they're gonna be adding another hundred and fifty-four dollars per household to their. Onto their taxpayers, if it goes to a county-wide system which has similar costs to Dufferin and Simcoe, so. I'm a bit surprised that we have so many people queuing up to put additional costs on their taxpayers, that's all.
I think we're, thank you for that information, I think, Madam CEO, you're just sort of gonna bring an exploratory report back, right?
That's correct, Mr., that's correct, the report will really, I think, lay out for council all of the various considerations that would need to be undertaken. In order to make an informed decision about how best to move forward.
Yeah. And thanks for bringing that up, Counselor Whoever, okay. Any, and you're gonna, you're gonna work all through Christmas to do this, right, Madam CEO?
Absolutely.
Oh, you gotta take some time off, for sure, okay, anybody opposed to this motion? Okay, so we'll look forward to that report coming forward. All right, so we've gotta keep moving along here, and so at this time, we're gonna go into camera. And I have a motion by Counselor Desai and Counselor Patterson, and to the two items that were listed on our agenda is the reasons why we're going in camera. And so I guess you're gonna have to clean, remove some people, I guess, Madam Clerk, is that right?
Rob Will, so the, the people that are staying in are CEO, our county solicitor, Pat Hoy, Randy Shirtsir. Kevin Wepler, Lacey Thompson, Scott Taylor, Sharon Melville, Tara, and myself. And as we're going into closed session, I just want to remind council to make sure that your work areas are secure.
Mine's good. And just as something I want to.
Mr. Ward. I just want to advise the clerk that I have a hard stop at four thirty, because we have a special committee of the whole meeting that starts then, so I'll be leaving the meeting at four thirty, whether we're enclosed or open.
Thank you.
Okay. And I'm just gonna say is, if you do have situations, you're at home and there's people coming and going, like Counselor Potter has a set of earphones. That does help, so people can't hear what's going on if you're in a corner somewhere and there's our people in your room, okay.
And I also kicked my wife out of the room too, so, she's just leaving.
Okay, well, that's.
Mr. Warden, I do, I do think Steve Dollmeyer is likely going to stay in as well, or come back in.
Okay, wrong news. Okay, that's carried, we're in, the two gentlemen are those that have to leave, I guess there's also Mr. Potter has to leave as well. Okay, so, we have a few other items left, we still have forum, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Warden, if it's okay, the last two items are just, are ones that I can handle over email with council, if that's okay.
Sure, I mean, and you, they, they can respond back to you.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, as far as delegations and, okay, that's okay with everybody. I think you did talk about the holiday, holiday hours is the week between Christmas and New Year's, and that's probably in any way, right? Okay, are there any notice of motions? Oh, sorry, I should say, there's other business, sorry.
I see Counselor Hicks.
Yeah, W word, sorry about that.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'll be very brief, Mr. Warden, I just wanted, you and I had a discussion last night. And I just wanted to take the opportunity very quickly to let everyone know that I will be seeking the position of Warden for twenty twenty-one, so there will be a race.
Thank you for that, and yes, you did, you did call me last night, that's right. Okay, is there, are there any other, other business before I move into notice, sorry about that, W word, I didn't mean to skip over that, is there any other, other business? Okay, seeing that, is there any notice of motions? Okay, I hear none, I have one more motion, and that's moved by Counselor Larry, and Counselor Decide that we adjourn. Anybody opposed to that, that is carried, okay, thank you, everyone, and that, that must be on record the longest day.
Thanks, everyone.